All right, welcome to the school board's work session. Today is October seventh, the subject of our work session today is going to be school board electoral zones. By way of a recap from our last meeting, we had the opportunity to hear from Ethan, from PSU, from Carl, and from Steve, and Robert, I was a crack in, and as a board, the input that we gave to everybody was to take a look at kind of two different maps that would be created, one would be closest to the board zones that we have right now. And then the second map would maximize for what we kind of call the K twelve experience, making sure that every board zone has a comprehend of high school, middle schools, elementary school, and that those are balanced through the district, and that the boundaries reflect as much as possible the geographic location of those schools and the catchment areas as well. So folks have done a lot of work for us on staff to bring back two maps, and that's what we have before us today. And the question before the board today really is, which map do we think is is the map that we want to move forward with? So we'll have a work session to discuss that right now. Ron, that will be recapped during the school board meeting as a first reading, right? So we have first and second readings of all of our items. And then next month, whichever direction we go with, that will be brought to the board for a vote. And then at that point, we will be moving forward with the implementation of those boundary zones as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So those will be implemented with the election of the the election for the school board that is going to be happening in May, and it will go into effect in June when when those new board members come into office. And then, of course, the folks who have a term that overlaps with that would continue forward as well. So I just wanted to give that information by way of clarification. There's one other thing that I think is really important that we keep in mind before we start this conversation. And that is that the selection of schools the board members represent is not affected by these zones. And what I mean by that is we are choosing the geographic areas that we are being elected to. We can later choose to have each board member represent different schools, schools that fall into our zone, or schools that do not fall into our zone, so we can generate a separate list afterwards. So it's great if that lines up, it's more comprehensible if it lines up. But it doesn't mean that later on, if we have board zones that are drawn up where a board member doesn't have a middle school, or a board member has more elementary schools in their zone than than, you know, is equitable, that we can't shift those around. And in fact, in our current configuration, that is already happened, right? So that we have elementary schools and middle schools and high schools that are outside of our geographic areas that we have to live in to be able to run, but that are given to to different board members. So I wanted to make a couple of quick points, and now I think I'm going to hand it over to Deputy Superintendent Mead
Yes.
to help walk us through the different maps.
So I'm going to lean on our expert from PSU here in just a moment. Tom, thank you for the comments, that was very comprehensive, and I want to be able to try to give as much time for conversation here among board members to ask questions. Not only staff, but Dr. Shergin as well. But most importantly, I want to thank you for adding this on tonight. It's an incredibly important topic and very difficult to try to contain in a regular board meeting.
And Dr. Mead, I apologize for interrupting you here, but I just want to make sure that we we recognize we are now in a work session. And that we have all of our board members present, Sunita is, with the exception of Ugana, who will be joining us a little bit later. And Sunita is joining us virtually. She is on the Zoom up there. So apologies for the interruption.
No apology necessary. So there will be a revisit of this, as Tom just mentioned a moment ago, during the board meetings, got about ten minutes slated for this topic. Obviously, in a much brevity fashion, so not a significant amount of conversation. It's more just a big picture overview following this conversation here today. So with that, Dr. Shergin, if you want to go ahead and get started.
I'll start by deferring a little bit to Stephen, guess, and slides prepared, which we'll work through and then.
Thank you. So you'll see up on the screen, we do have a PowerPoint review of the this evening. Chair Colette has hit many of the main points that we wanted to talk about. So next slide, please, here. So as you can see here, our key facts and our recap for what we did previously last time we were before you. So instead of reading bullet points to you, we will go to slide, to the next slide here, please. So you can see tonight, our goal is we are going to present two maps to you here this evening, and we hope to have as robust a dialogue as we can with you about the pros and cons, any questions that you might have about these maps. Our ideal situation is that when we get to the hearing this evening, we will be able to receive your direction on what map you prefer, and as you noted, have a first reading on that map. Ultimately, we'll come back to you in November with the second reading and adoption of that map. So next slide, please. We'll get to the overview of our statutory obligation for doing this. We have currently a zone map where enrollment or the number of people within the zones are not quite too equal, there's some adjustments that we have proposed. You can see here on the factors to be considered when looking at these maps. And I can assure you that the work that we have done in drafting these maps are consistent with these factors. So with that, I believe our next slide is the overview of the zone, so I'll turn it over to Dr. Shergin.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm sure happy to do that. So the the map that you see first, the baseline map are the zones as they are currently. You can see that we need, we do have an issue, a very large deviation, you know, that the the gap between the largest and smallest districts is, you know, just short of of twenty thousand people, so that does.
Sorry.
It's not right, because Greenway is part of my zone, and it's it looks like it's a part of zone six.
Greenway is part of your design.
I think that's.
Sorry, so sorry.
Right.
Those are sorry, sorry, I just get very confused.
I think that'd be a recurring theme, yeah, because there are some challenges to getting. Yeah.
How often it is not, okay, it sounds like this doesn't make sense, okay.
That's one of the issues that you'll see is is different in the other maps, so maybe that's an issue that can be rectified, depending on which of the plans gravitate toward. But you know, the the summary that you can see on the slide here is that we just have some zones, one, four, six, and seven, that really should have more people in them. They're to be parity, and then a couple zones like like two and five in particular that need to shed some people, there's been a lot of housing growth in particular in those zones, so there's a lot of new residents, new construction, and and that just necessitates rebalancing of the lines. So we, there's a lot of considerations that go into how the maps can be drawn sometimes in order to highlight how emphasizing different aspects of the redistricting task can look. We provide different plans that are, you know, emphasize one or a or another of the criteria that are are put forward, so both plans fulfill the Okay, actually, I guess before we get into the plans, we're going to talk a little bit about the the summary, the slide. Okay, sure, okay. So next slide, these are the different slides. So the present situation, this zones all contain an elementary school, at least in the middle school. They, there is not a comprehensive high school or option school. There is not in zone five either, but zone five does have option schools in view of there being a high school, there's enough high schools for every zone to have one. And then zone six, I think it's the case in a number of plans that high school zones are shared, high school attendance sounds kind of the largest catchment areas are shared by multiple zones, so that's called out here. You can see also a list in in the memorandum and the appendix of the memorandum, you'll see a list of facilities as well as the attendance zones of the board member zones under the baseline plan, so I won't go over that table in detail.
I think we need to make one correction on zone six. The high school and stuff.
On zone six.
Of baseline.
Mm hmm, yeah. So it says, oh, Mountain Side and South Ridge, should we be reded in South Ridge? Yeah.
This is good, yeah.
So the 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 first plan, which is kind of shorthand called continuity, although even balances, I have to say, are so large between districts, continuity is it's a bit of a stretch, the districts do change pretty substantially. The other thing that's unique about this plan is that there's an attempt to follow voting precinct lines. That aids the implementation of the new boundaries by the county elections office, they really like to follow precinct, existing precinct lines or precinct splits. It's not, it's not an absolute necessity, they can implement whatever boundaries are approved by the board. But that accounts for some of the kind of odd shapes I see notice in some of the boundaries here, some of the odd geometries. I mean, for example, one of the challenges was that, you know, Jacob Wismer and and Stoller are part of a very large precinct, you know, that that we would might like to keep in zone two, but had to be in zone three for population balance. So another oddity two is is south of highway, that's what looks like a sunset highway, it looks like a little bit of kind of a a curly Q area, and that's due to the unique shape of that voting precinct. Or one may have to do with another special district, maybe a fire district or a water provider or some other tax, you know, zone, and that has that kind of unique carve out shape there. But this plan achieves a very high level of balance, I think, to ground expectations of what that should look like, the the recommendation from the Secretary of State, and is is that there not be any larger than ten percent spread between the smallest and largest districts. So we clearly got well within that, we have just a three percent spread, and that's from the the smallest to minus one point one percent off to the highest plus one point six, the absolute magnitude of that difference. And so with with this low of deviation, it does give us increased confidence that we can go throughout the decade and, you know, hopefully not have as large of a population imbalance. You know, next time, next time around.
Dr. Shergin. Sunita has a question.
Okay.
I just wanted to recognize that. And then I think Ugana, you have a question there, too.
So I, my question is, you know, the the map that you showed as our current zone and the schools that are showing as our current, are they the same when we go to our website and under the our name we have certain schools, should they match exactly or not?
I think not, I think that the situation is that there are schools that are assigned as kind of under under a board members kind of sphere of influence or affiliation that are different than the schools that are physically located within the electoral zone, within the board member zone.
So Sunita, these are the maps we're looking at now are maps of where we have to live in order to run for the board.
Yeah, no, I get that, I get that, I just wanted to make sure that the current that you're showing as current is just the electoral and not because under our names we have certain schools, because it didn't match, one of the schools didn't match, so I just wanted to be clear on that, and that's fine.
So yes, I'm glad you called that out, you're right, the the schools that are called out in the table both in the memorandum and 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 the other documents that you have are not those that are on the website, because they're not the ones that are associated with the board members, they're related to the fiscal location.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
Yes, thank you so very much, Dr. Shergin, so in looking at this map of the continuity map, I see that a part of McKinley stays in zone two. Is that a plan?
So that you you're talking about plan, plan one, continuity, the the part of the part of McKinley in south of the highway, yes, yeah.
We have an auction between two plans tonight. So if there's something about one plan or the other, there isn't one plan we're being presented, we're being presented to. Just just to make sure, you didn't catch the preface, but basically, the question in front of the board tonight is, do we want to go with plan one, or do we want to go with plan two?
Okay, so right now we're talking about.
Plan one, that's right.
Plan one, McKinley is going to go into zone two.
It's not the school itself, actually, but part of that attendance zone that's up at the highway, yeah, and that's just necessary for population balancing. So there's no school facilities that are part of that zone that extends below south, but but there are there are houses there.
And one other thing that I think is important to say, the geographic areas that we have to live in and run for do not have to contain the schools that we may ultimately get. So what we we will create the map, and then we will balance the schools out afterwards. It's it's preferable usually if the schools are in within the zone. But for instance, if McKinley were to be outside of that zone, it could still be a zone, zone to zone five, or it could be assigned to zone seven, it could be assigned to any zone we want.
So, Tom, if I can just ask a clarifying question, because what what we're doing right now is basically looking at these zones in terms of voters versus, yeah, population.
So school zones are solely determined by the board, that's absolutely separate from this discussion.
Okay.
So this discussion really has to do with just balancing numbers.
Right, so I mean, but then we're also kind of want to use, even though it's not part of this discussion right now, the lens of where a board member might end up what schools might might be theirs, but it's not part of this conversation, but is tangential in some way.
In some ways, yeah. The board wants to do in the future.
Right, okay.
It it's only a part of this conversation insofar as you would want the zones to be in your geographic area that are your schools.
Right.
This is the same process that that the county commissioner is doing, this is the same process that the legislature did. When there's a census, they're trying to equal out the populations, and then it's just, we just happen to have schools assigned to the.
And this is every ten year process. So ten years ago, this, none of us were here, but this was done, Carl was here, but.
Yeah, I think there's.
Not a diss, that one was.
I think you can use the process to try and and kind of rectify that kind of disagreement to something exists between these schools that are kind of under your influence versus those that are actually in your zone.
Right.
So an example of that would be PCC, when they redrew their their board director zones, you know, they 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 noticed that some of their boards members actually don't have any PCC campuses in the zone that was assigned to them. So they do informally kind of in this after the fact process where they say, okay, well, these schools will be under your influence, they're supposed to be under your influence. So they rectify that that way, but then we we found that when we revisited the zones, we were able to actually zone it in such a way that that there was an agreement between the the zone boundaries and the schools that were influenced. But they are separate processes, that's right.
If I could just do a process check here really quick, great discussion. But we're twenty minutes in, and we haven't been able to kind of get through map one, I'd like to be able to get through these and then allow you to have as much dialogue as you'd like.
Hold our questions until you've presented the two maps.
Okay, thank you, Stephen. All right, so to summarize what we see in plan one, there's a lot that's similar between the current plan and plan one, so, you know, it was on one, still does not in the comprehensive high school or option school. One thing that is introduced in this plan, that's not the current situation, is that zone two is no longer contains a middle school in the continuity plan. And like I mentioned, that's due to the precinct boundaries, kind of where they exist, not facilitating that. But aspects of the plan can be preserved if there, you know, and individual issues like that can be can be addressed after the fact. And then zone five and six sort of have this similar characteristics to what they did before. Yeah. So plan two attempts to yeah, follow the attendance zone boundaries and not divide high school attendance areas, or when it was, when it, when it's necessary to divide high school attendance areas, to try and keep kind of cohorts that started in the same elementary school that are headed to the same high school together. So I mean, you'll see some places that 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 are divided across the zones like Hazeldale, where some of the students are tracked towards Loa, and some of them are tracked towards Mountain Side. And so we choose to draw that line between zones four and six boundaries along that attendance zone boundaries, that even though we did have to divide an elementary school attendance zone, we've kept them with their respective high school attendance. That's that's a set of principles that follows that one. It also achieves balance equally, you know, accurate to the the first plan. It does not follow precinct lines, so some, you know, it'll be additional work for for county elections. Well, actually, if the election's at large, it'll just be the county clerk, so it may not be that important to follow precinct lines, but it it doesn't follow them, it follows instead kind of major roads or other kind of distinguishing geographic boundaries. And so in this case, the characteristics of the plan do look pretty different from the the baseline. In this plan, each zone contains several elementary schools, and at least one comprehensive high school. Or again, because we have only six, there's there's an option schools, and that's that's in in zone five. There are a couple of things that do change, so so in the the realignment plan, zone two still is not, still doesn't contain a middle school. That's because we're following, you know, that north-south road, and 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 so we just missed that boundary where where Jacob Wismer and Stoller are, but but some of the attendance zones there are captured, actually. And then also zone six does not contain a middle school either. Does contain some of the, a lot of the Highland Park Middle School attendance zones and some of the Conestoga, but those facilities are not inside of zone six any longer.
It really fascinating that in kind of zone, kind of follow the map here. And this is zone seven, the great, the dark gray, I mean, the Kelly green, right?
Well, the the zone boundaries are drawn by the blue, blue lines, but you're right, there's a split right there, that's the Raleigh Hills.
That's what the colors are.
Yeah, the colors represent a high school feeder area, and and then, yeah, so this, I should, I should explain these. Yeah, these aren't in the slides, but I think these are really useful.
I can't fit it all in my space.
I think your intuition is right, this was kind of a last minute map that we put together that really show what plan two is designed to accomplish. And so what you see on this colored map are not just the boundaries, it's the same blue boundaries superimposed. But what you see are are a couple of different things, you see color shading, which represents a high school catchment area. And you also see gray lines, gray boundaries within the colored boundaries, and those represent you know, unique combinations of elementary school boundaries within the high school boundaries. So kind of, they they're developed using the school district grid, the attendance grid.
That makes more sense, I'm not going to look at the color.
Okay. I think it's useful for understanding what what plan two is designed to accomplish and kind of what that looks like. I find it helpful, you know, but but it's a lot of information to take in, so, yeah, the 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 important thing to note is that between all the maps, the the blue boundaries represent opposed zone boundaries, and that's the same in in all the different versions of the maps that you can see.
The board members, I'm thinking, will take the next few minutes for questions, and then after that, we'll do a round robin to see what folks are thinking in terms of the two options.
Before we go to questions, if we could go back to the realignment summary, that's slide ten. Something I just wanted to share with you is just something to just put in the back of your mind, when I'm looking at this, the area of growth in the community of future population is in the North Bethany area, the top of zone two, and the South Cooper Mountain area in the southwest corner of zone six. We're going to, not as much, but we're still going to see growth in zone two. And in this plan two, there's room within the number of people in the zone to accommodate that, and the same with zone six. We don't know how many people necessarily are going to be in each of these zones and the timing of that going to happen. But within the next ten years, I can say with some confidence that these areas are going to be largely built out, and the the difference in numbers for your successors will be maybe not as great as you're seeing here this evening. It's just something to put in, put in the back of your mind, it's not a factor necessarily for us to make a decision on. But just for your awareness. I'm sorry for interrupting.
That's right, thank you, we appreciate the additional information. Questions from the board?
So as we're discussing this, we're looking at the next ten years, although Stephen just put in that little crux of, oh, by the way, we're looking at zone six and think zone two kind of skewing it, and so, right.
Yeah, negative for this movement. To the California roof.
Yeah, they're slightly undersized, yeah.
But then it's on six on optional.
That's pretty, you know, when you look at this, you know that we're up against Portland, we're up against Hillsborough, we're at the urban growth boundary at the top. I mean, we've got some thing, Tiger South, Tigerd. So then you just got to take all those without those hard promoters. And it looks like, what I see here is, I I really did not realize how zone seven had been, you know, a state of Illinois for so long. Of how far up north it went, to how far south it went, and skinny, you know, they so both of these two maps do a better job of of, and I think what the hard part is for our district, and we we've always is that it's not like it's a pie where we have a center and everything's comes wheels out of that like a pie piece, it it doesn't work that way, especially when you just don't even think about in that this map of in the middle of our district, we have where people don't live, we have a Nike headquarters, we have we have, people don't live there, so it's not going to change with a census, it's, people can't live there. So you can't play too much with that middle, because you're not going to ever have a population center, you can have some infill. But I think you really did a a good job of, I think, zone seven needed to be redone for a while, because that was really a a hard thing to explain continuity wise where that went, so both of these, both of these maps do a much better job, so I think it's, it's really just a matter of how we look at our school district, are we are we looking at it more going horizontal rather than vertical? And then, of course, we obviously, we have to deal with highway twenty-six, we have to deal with, you know, TV highway, we have to deal with highway two seventeen, we have to. So it's it's impossible for us to keep the feeders and I mean, it's it's impossible, so we just have to figure out what what makes the most sense to us, and then especially thinking in the next ten years, the growth pattern.
I'm just looking at like the deviation numbers. But yeah, I mean, it's not like, yeah.
Dr. Shergin, can you objectively say that with plan two, within each of the board members' zone areas, they have a more even balance of the K twelve experience, so there's a, the distribution of schools is that there is going to need to be less revision after the fact in terms of who grabbed which schools that are outside of their geographic areas?
I I think that's that's a fair characterization, that is the goal of of plan two, is to more closely align it with high school attendance areas in particular, so really, in that plan, we're trying to to put into effect what the statute suggests, which is that attendance zones should be taken into consideration to the greatest extent possible, and so, you know, each zone is really kind of anchored around a high school feeder and minimizing the splits and attendance zone, so, you know, if the schools which board members represent were to be shifted to to follow these zones, I feel pretty confident that those would continue for, you know, with a lot of stability into the future, yeah. Yeah, so there are still splits that are necessary, you know, in order to just achieve population balance, but you know, the the zones really do start to become centered around the high school. So zone one really is um the the South Ridge feeder area. Zone two is really about Westview. Zone three is really about Sunset. Zone four is, you know, still a challenge. It has part of, part of, uh, well, it's it's most of, most of Aloha. A part of, part of Aloha is in zone five because of population balancing. Um, and then zone five is kind of the the other uh, the other schools, including, including Bay, Memorial Station, Community High School. Zone six is really centered around mountainside, and then zone seven becomes really centered around uh Beaverton High School, except for the part of it that is north of the highway, which is in zone three. That's kind of what, that's what lends to such a radically different shape, because actually the current boundaries really don't include the high school attendance sectors.
So maybe another way of just phrasing this and I'll ask this question again, is um if you were a parent and your, your kid attended a school that was within that boundary, you would look at this plan and you would say, okay, you know, my kid attended Beaverton High School and my school board member is, you know, is the school board member whose area surrounds Beaverton High School?
Well, I think it would be easier for for folks to see the map and then to mentally know which board member was selected from their zone. So, but that second step would really depend on the board taking the additional step of changing the, you know, or or making sure that the school facilities matched with the facilities are located within the zone. But but yeah, I think.
I I'm just trying to think it through from the 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 way our public looks at it and and the comprehensibility of the public and their ability to say, okay, my kid goes to McKinley Elementary School and I know my zone five board member thus is, you know, X person.
Right.
Yeah, and another point of clarification, Tom, the sheet that we have with all of your pictures and the schools, that's the one we publish far and wide. We don't publish these far and wide, and that's intentional because we don't want people to be mixed up. It's based on the schools that you've decided amongst yourselves that align. Rather than parents try to figure out, okay, well, zone wise, right?
But it always becomes confusing when it's time for board elections. Yeah, because people do not know where they live and the maps that you make, try to go to the clerk's office are really hard to read.
Yeah.
But boy, either one of these plans, Plan One or Plan Two, people are going to live in entirely different places that are in the, in the current area because of the way we've changed. So um, you know, it's, it's, they're both very different than the current places where people live. And we've always known, you could live at the very edge of your zone and be far away from, you know.
Oh, yeah, for sure. Yeah, I do. No matter where you go, I live far away.
Oh, um, quote me on that. But people get so confused about that you have to live in the zone versus the schools that are represented in the zone. And they think they need to be where their kids go to school.
You're on the edge. You live on the edge.
There aren't any other questions? I think we'll maybe do a round robin and see if folks have a preference. Um, you know, just kind of letting the rest of us know if you have a preference for Plan One or Plan Two, why you have a preference. Um, and then we can kind of see if we're at a consensus and we can bring uh a particular plan forward to the board as a part of our uh November school board meeting. So uh, Susan, any thoughts?
I mean, I look at Plan Two and it, I mean, again, it's just a visual thing and it um it seems to be there's less the deviation is a little bit less, you know, so maybe that's a better thing in terms of how population is divided. Certainly, I know um there's a big difference deviation when you look at the current zones, but I like the way it's distributed and and two.
And, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
That's gonna cut you off.
That's good.
Uh, for me, I would say, I mean, zone two, I mean, map two um makes sense in a sense because there will be growth in those two areas. And that I would lean toward that one because of that, but really they're if the group wanted to go with the first one, that would be fine too. I just think that addressing that growth area will keep us more even long term.
Eric?
I like you for alignment. Again, standard deviation, I mean, the two areas are gonna grow kind of negative now, so they're gonna grow into themselves and be even tighter deviation probably. And then, um, you know, maybe it doesn't matter, but I think it is pretty nice to have like a board with like a copper high school or a big, you know, option school in there. And so that's a little bit better than one, it looked like to me. But then again, I guess that doesn't really matter so much, but resonates.
Sinitta?
Yeah, actually, what Steve Sparks gave that last bit of information about zone two and zone six, it makes more sense to go with number two because, you know, there's a slight um that they can grow a little bit, except for zone three, everybody is negative. So it it looks as, number two is better. And then the schools that are, and my understanding is that the schools that we have more in one zone as compared to other zone, it really doesn't ma- matter because that will be changed, right, later on, according to who's gonna represent what school, so. So number two makes more sense.
Ugana?
Um, I don't know enough to make a choice um on one or two, but looking at the numbers, um, I missed out part of your presentation, Dr. Shergen, so I don't have as much information as my fellow board members have tonight. It is, it's my fault, it's on me. But based on the numbers that I'm seeing, um, it would make more sense to go with Plan Two. But that's just based on what I'm seeing visually, but not off of what um has already been presented to us. Again, my fault. Uh, based on the numbers that I'm looking at, I'll go for Plan Two.
Thank you.
Um, I think there's some positives and minuses to each map. And what I really appreciate is you heard us and you tried to make that first map to really um be similar to where we are now, but once you see how much, that, you know, it makes, you know, trying to be similar to where it is now does not make too much sense to me. Um, I like um Plan Two for the reason it's got much simpler lines. And I think that long term to our public, that's gonna make much more sense than these little jags that, you know, go back and forth and and that kind of thing. I think people will get used to this area, this area, this area. Um, and so for that, I would, I would lean toward Plan Two.
Coming from the zone of Illinois, I understand the challenge of having a a very weirdly crafted zone and trying to explain that to people. Um, and also it has resulted in having schools that are both inside my zone and that I don't actually represent and that are outside of my zone and I do. So all of the challenges of these maps, um, I can personally experience in talking with members of the community. So I'm very supportive of Plan Two. I really appreciate the straight lines, the comprehensibility. It is, it is much more clear to me. Um, and uh, I also appreciate the piece about um coming growth because I think that that is gonna be the thing. It would be great if in ten years from now, the next board that is sitting in this room discussing this is not as uh disproportionate in terms of the populations that they represent in their zones as we are right now. Uh, because I, I don't think that's an ideal situation and I love, we could solve that problem where we are now. We'll see in ten years if that actually happens. Ten years is a long time. Nobody can predict that far out. There are many, many things that happen. Uh, but standing where we are right now with the information we have right now, I think um Plan Two is a better plan. Um, so I, I understand that, you know, some board members are are still taking this information in. What we'll do is we will go uh tonight and we'll have a first reading with Plan Two in mind. People will have, still have time to think about this before we go to a second reading and we vote it in. That will be in November. So between uh tonight's board meeting and between November, when we vote on that, there are still opportunities to try to think about the things that bubble up. So Ugana, if there's more information you need, like, let's make that happen. And there's still an opportunity, if you were to find things you don't like, to be able to bring that to that meeting in November and affect the outcome.
So I might have a question about reading, because I need to say first reading, reading for policy, not necessarily for zones.
Yeah.
So what does that mean when you say reading?
First presentation.
Presentation, okay.
Right.
Similar to what we would do for curriculum.
Okay.
This one probably.
I wasn't trying to do anything. I was just trying to understand what I was missing.
In ten years, I think Terry and Tabe will be the last people here. Thank you for all of your work. We really appreciate it and um, I'm sure there were many hours spent tinkering with these boundaries and numbers and we appreciate everything. We appreciate staff's time. And um we will look forward to hearing this tonight for a first presentation. Um, and I'm gonna call us out of work session. Oh.
I I would just like to call out uh for Shergen for being so flexible and responsive. We lost a week and um he did yeoman's work to get us to where we are here this evening, so I really appreciate it. Gosh, that was easy. I should have.
Okay, well, I mean, I have to.
I would like to begin with a roll call of board members. When I call your name, please reply with president. Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Karen Perez.
Same thing.
Eric Simpson.
Here.
Anita Guard.
Present.
Ugana Enenaya.
Present.
Becky Timchuk.
Yeah.
Colette, I am here. We will now do a land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the Tualton Kalakulua. We thank the ancestors of the Kalakulua for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders, and families who demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing, and creativity. Does anybody have any changes they would like to make to the agenda tonight? I have one change I would like to make. You'll see item seven, items for action at a future meeting. And it is the school board electoral zone revision. We have Dr. Sherigan, who is with us from PSU tonight. And it would be great if we could move that up right after the consent agenda. So that we can hear from him before we go to the rest of the reports and potentially cut him loose for the rest of the night. Because he is very much privileging us with his presence at our meeting tonight. So everybody, okay, great. Then we will move on to recognitions. And the school board regularly takes the opportunity to recognize BSD staff and community members for their outstanding contributions to the district and the community. Tonight, I'd like to take a moment to honor someone close to home and share that our superintendent, Dr. Gustavo Valderas, now the president of the National Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents, ALIS. ALIS is a nationwide organization with more than 8,000 members that works to develop and support Latino and other school administrators to help ensure schools effectively serve all students' educational needs with an emphasis on Latino youth who make up more than a quarter of the student population in public schools in Beaverton and across America. Dr. Valderas was sworn into office as president of ALIS earlier this month and will serve for two years. Dr. Valderas, thank you for serving our students' future in this way, supporting school leaders of color and advocating for our students and families in Oregon and across the United States.
Is our Oregon Association of Latino Administrators president as well. So honored to be able to serve with her in this role in Oregon as we continue to empower not just our Latino youth, but all youth that come from diverse backgrounds and mainstream youth that are traditional in terms of our population, in terms of just excellence. And again, something that we've been doing for nineteen years in Oregon. I helped found the Oregon Association of Latino Administrators with the core purpose of trying. We didn't see ourselves at school. We just didn't see ourselves in school. And it's really heartwarming that I'm been honored with this position with my national colleagues. And we continue to strive to do what's best, just not for all kids, but specifically for our Latino and African American youth and continue to work with our national associations with NAPSE, the Black Administrator Association as well. Because again, we need more people that are reflective of our student population. We know that. And I think we've done a really nice job here so far this spring with hiring. We're going to continue to do what we can to be more proportional. Because I think that's what our kids need. And I truly do think, in my thirty-three years of education, that is a game changer for us. That truly is a game changer for our kids. When they see kids, when they see professionals, professional staff that are reflective of themselves in our classrooms and just not our classified staff, as teachers, as administrators, as district office leaders, as community leaders, as we, as sitting in front of you with probably the most diverse board that we've had in Beaverton history. It really fills me with joy. So thank you.
Congratulations again. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. So we'll hand it back to Dr. Valderas.
So thank you for this time. I want to thank you for your continued dedication to our district. In a few short weeks, we'll be asking voters whether they will approve the renewal of our local option levies towards a hiring of two hundred and eighty-six teachers within the Beaverton School District. We are fortunate to have high-quality staff within the district. Want to make sure that people understand all funds generated from this levy go directly to. All funds go directly to teachers. There have been questions regarding the difference between a bond and levy. At Oregon State Tax Limitations, communities have two options for local funding. Bonds are for building. Levis are for learning. Bonds are debt offered to the public, which must eventually be repaid with interest through local property taxes. Our voters approved the bond measure last May that was used to replace aging school buildings and make other capital improvements across the system. Bond dollars have been used for long-lasting capital improvements, such as buildings and buses and books. Bonds cannot be used to pay for operating costs like electric bills or teacher salaries. Local option levies are local property tax to raise money for school operating costs. There are you provide services in Beaverton. Our levies use a hundred percent again for teachers and classrooms. And original levies are limited in amount and must be renewed by workers' approval every five years. The most recent levy that our voters approved in Beaverton will expire next June if voters don't choose to renew before then. It also just, we want to make sure that the folks understand that we're working to develop our strategic plan and that works underway. The process will engage board members, district staff, students, families, and our broader community in providing input and developing a plan that will be adopted by the board. And we'll guide our districts' work for years to come. It will be our north star. We helped student focus groups last week with more than a hundred elementary, middle, and high school students. They're very insightful and will continue to meet with different groups of kids to assess how they're feeling about our current state of learning in the district. I really want to appreciate the communications and community involvement department under leadership of Shelley Billy Shaw and overseeing these focus groups. Thank you for the schools for working on getting students identified and connected. And especially thank the kids who are participating and providing their voice, very diverse groups of kids. We'll continue our strategic plan process and look forward for our work together as we help prepare for our future initiatives. We do have school reports on the agenda tonight, and they may look a little different than the past. Like to dig into how we provide information about each of our schools to the board and provide multiple mechanisms to do so. One models have pre and post presentations. These set meetings in August in which schools present their action plans and the data used in creating school improvement plans, or here in Beaverton called school learning plans. In the spring, the schools will then report how their plans worked throughout the school year and how they've had to be fluid and changes that occurred and the why. The teaching and learning executive ministers would work with the building leaders throughout the school year on supporting the plans that they do now. They do a lot of work in schools to make sure that the plans come to fruition. During my school visits to schools, I'd like to invite board members to visit with me and provide an opportunity for board members to have a dialogue with the building leaders on their individual school plans. I think that's been done before. I do continue that practice. Also for board meetings, I'd like to highly recommend that we showcase student voice in board meetings. And that's something where I'm going to work with board leadership to see how we can do that. I think having student performances or just acknowledging youth is always exciting. Because again, that's what we're here for. We're here for kids. It's great to highlight our kids in public. So thank you for the time this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Valderas. Next up, we have comments from our employee groups. Lindsay Ray from the Beaverton Education Association.
Good evening, Dr. Valderas, Chikat, and members of the board. For the record, my name is Lindsay Ray. I'm a she-aid pro-nouns and I'm a high school math teacher currently serving as the BEA president. I want to spend my time this evening echoing Dr. Valderas and talking about the upcoming election on November eighth, specifically, if you can guess, the BSD Teachers' Levy Renewal or Measure Three Four, Three Two One. The levy currently funds almost three hundred teaching positions. And we are so thankful to the generosity of our Beaverton community in supporting our schools. The levy renewal will not increase the tax rate, but will continue to fund almost three hundred positions. I recently looked at the map on the BSD website that shows how many teachers are funded at each school by the levy, and even I was shocked to see how high those numbers were. Approximately eighteen percent of the current classroom teachers. Approximately eighteen percent of the current classroom teachers are paid for by this teacher's levy. Well, I would argue that many of our class sizes are still a little too large. It is imperative that we ensure our students aren't subjected to even bigger class sizes by passing this level. Many folks in BSD might not remember the Big Shuffle of two thousand and twelve. That was the last time we were unable to pass a levy. The result was the transfer of three hundred and twenty-five teachers across the district to fill the bucket gap, opt into positions that they had never taught before, and an explosion in our class sizes. And let's not let that happen again. If we zoom out a bit, we can see that lenies are necessary because the system of state funding for school in Oregon is unstable and inadequate. So, when folks are considering candidates at every level, I encourage them to vote for people who will invest in public education. And after the election, we've got a lot of work to do to make sure our leaders understand the, to make sure that our schools are fully funded so that all students can get the education that they deserve. Alis are being mailed out starting this Wednesday, so they should be in your office soon. If you're not registered yet, votes, the deadline to do so is tomorrow, and you can do that online in just a couple of minutes. I encourage all of our community members to be engaged and be open to the process. Your voice makes the difference, and our students, educators are counting on you to pass this first.
Thank you, Lindsay. Next up, we have Kirsty Sacrament from OSEA.
Good evening. We love everyone. Let me get my notes out.
Kirsty, you might have to use a microphone.
Hello. Yeah. Hello. There we go. Good evening, Chair Colette, good evening, Superintendent Valderas, and everyone at the school board. For everyone who doesn't know, my name is Kirsty Sacrament. I am the Classified Union OSEA president. Thank you so much for your time and giving us this space to bring to the table our people. We, as OSEA, always want to say thank you to our board and to our community for giving us this space to share at this forum and at this table. Today is day twenty-nine of the school year, and we hit the ground running, ready to go back, ready to have fun, ready to engage and learn with our students. We learn with them the same way we teach them. It's been great, but it's been busy already. We, as OSEA, have now been able to have a meeting with all of our departments and our leadership meetings, and we are very thankful to have met all of our new members and our new staff, as well as had FaceTime in person with so many people that we've been meeting on Zoom for years. And we are thankful for the conversation, the collaboration, and all of the problem solving that we are all working through together. We have many things going in every different department, hoping to help support our staff, our community, and most importantly, our students' families. We love to have these conversations with our union leadership, both with PEA, OSEA, and our management team here in Beaverton, and how we can continue to move forward with supporting all our goals and supporting the reality of what it is to work for a school district. We allow us to do it for passion. We are here for a reason, but the other day, this is our job. There are rules, restrictions, boundaries that we are trying to overcome and work through as a community, and we really appreciate all the collaboration and conversations we need to have. Something I, Lindsay said it wonderfully from the PEA about the election. Big deal, important. We as the OTA back our future, and we all know that losing this levy money would be a threat to our community. For us as classified staff, we are seeing a little more focus on the ground floor. We have a lot of, lack of better words, fires that we're trying to put out, that we're trying to support, and continuing to try to gain new staff as well as retain our old staff and keep it going, keep everyone supported and learning and growing altogether. We are looking forward to continue our conversations about using our forty-thirty money, something that OSEA is really focused on, talked about this at many different meetings and many tables, is find some version of a TOSSUP sort or classified staff, looking for some kind of roving team to support our subs, our new staff, and our veteran staff. We know that there is not enough time in the day for anyone, and we know that we need more support. So, something that we're really pushing for to continue hiring new staff and continue retention of our current staff is looking for more mentorship, more support. We recognize the reality is that we have this money right now this year, but the long-term, we keep keeping up with this program, these ideas that we have, is the balance. But something that we're really thinking we need on our classified level is more support, more support in our buildings, more supporting at our sites, more chance of retaining, asking questions, and faith. Our working employees that need support, whether it's good, bad, or otherwise. We really want to say thank Albonzo for coordinating the admin meeting that happened this last Friday. It was a meeting held for admin with specialized programs in their buildings, and there was a chance for both special education teachers and classified staff to speak on behalf of what the reality of working in a classroom and a building is and what kind of things we need to support our buildings. We really thank the space there was given, people to share, and the ideas that are going to come from that conversation. We are thankful for the continued problem solving and collaboration, and we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirsty. Right. I believe at this time, we don't have anybody here for public comments tonight. But I do want to note that we have received five written public comments. Board members, appreciate your comments and thank each and every one of you for taking time to share your thoughts with us. We will move on to the consent agenda then. And you, I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
I second the motion.
It has been properly moved and seconded that we adopt the consent agenda. Board members, answer with a "aye," "nay," or abstain when I call your name. Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Katam Perez.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
Sunita Guard.
Aye.
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 Ugana. We got you, Sunita.
Aye.
Ugana, Becky Timchuk.
Aye.
Tom Colette, aye. The consent agenda passes unanimously. I will now move on to the report section of the board meeting. Oh, actually, we will not move on to the reports of the board meeting. We are going to move ahead with the school board electoral zone revision and hear from Dr. Me, Dr. Sparks, and Dr. Sherrigan from PSU.
Good evening. Thank you, board, superintendent. This is, as you know, we met fifteen ago, and the executive set it to review the maps for consideration over the course of the next month, prior to your review and ask staff questions as they come up. This is a matter of a recap here for you, but more importantly, it's also to help inform our community and to really help emphasize what the purpose of this is.
For the record, my name is Steven Sparks, executive administrator for long-range planning. As Dr. Me said, we are here on a quest to balance the population count in our school board zones. When we last met, we talked about a number of factors that go into creating the zones. And as Dr. Me said, we spent a good forty-five minutes in a work session reviewing the we have created since our last meeting. And the outcome of that work session was the more established its preference for map two, of the two maps that were presented. And I'm going to pass the microphone to Dr. Sherrigan for you to provide that high-level overview of maps, of his maps that he produced for your consideration.
Thank you very much. On the background, I think that we need to jump into discussion of the proposals. After each census, local governments, the riding levels are restricted or balanced so that the population in each zone is as close to equality as possible. Plan two accomplishes for the school district board members by realigning electoral zones to school attendance grid theater areas, specifically to high school theater areas, and when divisions in the high school theater areas are necessary to avoid to the greatest extent possible splitting elementary school attendance zones. So, the seven zones in the Beaverton School District are divided in the map according to the map. It accomplishes quality of population in the zones to well-identified standards and observes the statutory and other guidance in the state of Oregon and other sources regarding how the tripping of the conducted. So, the results of those that are in your packet in terms of the schools which are physically located inside of each zone, as well as the attendance areas, the current attendance areas which are located in these zones. As we mentioned several times in the course of our conversations on the subject, that the attendance zones are a separate issue and are not affected by the redrawing of board member electoral zones or election zones. The decisions about which neighborhoods will feed into which schools may be a separate process and to decisions that will be made on this issue. It also came to be a question between these schools which are assigned to each board member, mine went from this school to this one, and a school correctly located in attendance zones. The tenants, the purpose of those, it's only to determine where a board member, which is in.
After this evening, we will return to you in November. It's a map for your adoption.
Great. Before I ask for questions from board members, I want to make two clarifications. One, the, when we were looking at the maps earlier, we were in an open study session, not an executive session, just to be clear. And then, two, and I want to say this twice because this is very important. This does not change school boundaries, right? One more time, this does not change school boundaries. This is just how board members are elected. So, no students will be moved to a different school because of this decision. It only affects the area that board members have to live in. And with that, board members, do you have any questions? Becky?
We were able to see big maps with big, we know still that our public out there associates, depending on what schools they live by or where their kids attend, that they think that's where the zone is and they have to physically live within this zone. Whose job is it to actually come up with where like the actual streets? We saw some really big, big-picture maps and general area, but whose, is it the county clerks? Is it our job? Whose job is it to actually come up with the streets of where our zones are off?
All of this data is in a JIS database, which goes by specific address. We share that information with the elections office, and it will be reflected in those materials.
I think Becky has a follow-up.
Oh, sorry, thanks.
I'm just wondering, because even now, it's really hard for our community to go and see exactly, are we going to have the capability of showing a detailed map? Or is that something they're still going to have to go to the county clerks to see that? Because I know it's really hard to get a real detailed map and zero down on it, but will we, will we have that capability? Because we will have people that are running for zones that they're going to have to be educated on.
We can draw an outside any scale necessary. Have that on our webpage.
I'm seeing the heads up from Robert.
Question is, is there a way of sharing the zone maps that you shared with us publicly? Or I, I don't know if you have slides to share with on our, oh, there you go. Thank you.
As you're seeing on the screen, we've been talking about two maps. You'll see a third map, which is the current zone, the board zone boundary map. So, I believe that is, it's not as good as it used to be. On the left-hand side, the real map is our first proposal, and the map on the right edge is referred to as map two, and that is the map at the work session that the board expressed its preference for.
And I would just add, if anybody's following along from home and is interested, these are all in the board packet, so you can see them in the packet for the work session. And then, I think, again, they appear in the packet for the school board meeting tonight as well. And it's hard to see over a little screen over Zoom, but those packets will contain maps that you can put on your computer and look at in detail. Karen?
And just to point out, some of the things, some of the people that we were looking at or the items we're looking at, that Plan Two actually leaves room for the growth areas in Zone Two and Zone Six, and then also accounts, leaves a little extra in the numbers of people in Zone Three, which is not necessarily going to give much growth. And then it has those straight lines that allows us to, for people to kind of see the zones in a clearer fashion, and then also keeps most schools within their high schools connected. So, those were just some of the little big pieces that we were looking at when looking at that Plan Two.
Any other questions from the board? Well, we appreciate all the work. Thank you for bringing this to us, and we look forward to taking a vote on Map Two at our November school board meeting. Next up, we have reports and the financial report from Mr. Mike Schofield.
Thank you, Chair Colette. Appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. Missed you last month, but happy to be back with you this month. In the financial report, you have the general fund activity and forecast. You have the summary of the revenue spending, the encumbrances, accounting accounts which you'd like to look at in terms of where we are by school and investment supports. I've got three of those in your package tonight. I would like to comment a little bit on the general fund year-to-date activity forecast. I think that's the last one, sure that you brought the open revenue item down a little bit at one point six million dollars. That's based and because of our lower enrollment that we're experiencing this year. And it actually reflects the, will be, remember how we get paid, we paid it to hire of either our enrollment in the prior year or the current year. So, we're currently reverting back to last year's funding in terms of overall numbers of agents. So, that's why you see that reduction on the revenue side. In the expenditure side, you'll see we also took numbers down a little bit on the salary and benefits side. That is primarily because we held back about one percent of staffing. We prepared to, like this one year, that one percent pullback. We held it back in anticipation that if enrollment didn't show up, we wouldn't spend resources. So, enrollment didn't show up, so we brought that salary and benefit down a bit. We're also seeing, I know the board's aware that we've had quite a staff turnover, quite a few hires in the district. That's causing us to see our overall salary averages going down a little bit as well. So, that's a little bit of good news in finding enrollment environment. But wanted to share with you those kind of the picture topics. If you look at the end to the middle of that page, that predicted surplus and deficit, we're still running a deficit this year, probably a deficit of eleven million dollars. We're hoping to spend that number for the next year, but it's definitely not going to be like I planned. And as part of it, we're running a deficit. Um, we're hoping we spend that number for the rest of the year, but it's definitely a reminder that I plan and as part of it, we're running a deficit. Uh, another general reminder, uh, November 18th will be the next forecast from the state of Oregon on how things are going in the state. And how long these are coming in July. Uh, that, that forecast on November 18th will be the forecast that our new governor will use. Whatever recommended budget, uh, in December. Uh, so that'll be our first kind of glimpse and picture at where we can, uh, the state school fund might be headed. At least here the new governor would, um, have a spark point. Uh, the legislature will take it from there and they'll be the ones that actually decide it. But they'll get a shot at what the governor, uh, we'll, we'll give a shot to see what the governor is proposing sometime in December. Question about the forecast or any of the financial numbers?
Karen?
With the, um, a little bit, you know, smaller, you know, more lower model where we want to be, how's that put us where in SAM or allocation model for staffing model? So we, we're currently overstaffed a bit. Um, it's, it's primarily the elementary level. Uh, we did move teachers around. I think we gave that to you in our summary last month, uh, where we heard some. Our one of, uh, Dr. Valverde's Friday memos where we talked about some teacher movement. Not nearly as extreme as it was the prior year. Um, the prior year, remember we had a number of students headed to flex, which caused us to move a lot of teachers, um, during the month of September. Not as much movement this year, but a little bit of movement. Um, we didn't add much staff at all, a little bit of high school level, the short, fill some gaps.
Becky?
I appreciate it because I had to ask you about, and I could see that you'd made the corrections with the staffing. And the only other change that, uh, I saw is, which again would be a positive, that we started off with a little bit of a better beginning fund balance than what you projected, um, and you put together the budget. So that kind of set us a little bit in better shape. Is that correct?
Yeah, a little bit, let's get this there. Um, it'll actually improve a little more when we bring in the financial statements in November. Uh, that remember the Gatsby for leases that are coming up, that Gatsby thing. Doesn't change our life at all monetarily, but in terms of financial reporting, you'll see that. But yeah, that's correct. It's just a little better than the budgeted, uh, which is what's happening.
Anita?
Thank you, Mike. Um, my question is, um, you know, when, uh, with the school option levy. One of the questions that we get asked is that. The levy is estimated to raise about $39 million per year. But it's funding 286 teachers. Can you talk a little bit about the averages like 136 and that does not? You know, that, that's a very high number, how that number is, we are coming up with that so that. Uh, general public can have an idea how we are coming up with that number and the estimated funds. So if you can help us with that.
Sure. So the way we budget, we budget based on averages and we talked a little bit about those averages looking like they may come down with the term when we've seen. Uh, when we estimated for the levy, we estimated somewhere in the range of about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars per an elementary or middle school teacher. As our, as our, and at the high school level, it was closer to about a hundred and thirty-six, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. Um, that is a fully loaded cost. And remember what, when we say fully loaded, that is not only salary, but that the associated benefit cost. So you think about medical, uh, you think about social security, the employer portion of social security, PERS rate. Um, PERS bond rate. Uh, remember you have a financial reserve that's based on essentially taxing ourselves. So at on the employer portion, there's a two-year impact that we, we put ourselves and put into a financial reserve. Uh, for that really day, uh, when it starts to rain. So when you add all those factors up, you can take a salary, um, uh, not only when you add the salaries and the benefits. Actually to that hundred and thirty-two, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. The spread is primarily what you see is some of your newer teachers at the elementary level overall. And at the high school level, you've got generally more senior staff there. That helps, Anita?
Yeah, that helps a lot. Also, can you confirm the fact that if we raise, because we are talking about averages? So if you raise more than the money that. Um, that covers those teachers, is that money going to go for all the teachers on me and not anything else? Can you please confirm?
Teachers that, I'm sorry, uh, yes, director, uh, guarded us. All funds raised, by the way, will go to, uh, supporting teachers and hiring teachers. Again, and as I mentioned, if the average, if that average cost is going down, that means we might have more funds for more teachers as well. So.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you very much.
Anita? Karen?
Hey, I also wanted to clarify that, um, if, in, if we were not to pass the levy or the levy were not to pass. We don't have the money to pay for those two hundred days with teachers somewhere else.
That's correct. So when you think about that number of teachers, that's, you know, in that thirty-nine million dollar range. Um, while you do have a, a, in terms of a balance of over a hundred million dollars. Spending that all in one shot would not be the recommendation of that in myself. Or I think Superintendent Valverde's, we would not, we, we would be setting ourselves up the fall of the cliff. Uh, in a fairly rapid timeframe. So, um, while, while we may be able to shore up some areas. It, it would not be our recommendation to, uh, the one-time funds, uh, to support ongoing operations.
Ugana?
Mike, I just want to, um, ask a follow-up question to what Karen just asked you. Um, for the parents at home, if the levy, if we, uh, don't pass that levy, what is that stake? Can you give us a clear picture? What is that stake if the levy passed?
We would be laying up teachers and increasing prices throughout the district. And face was a very difficult position.
Thank you, Mike.
And Mikey said something in passing that I just wanted to follow up on, which is new employee staff. Um, we are looking for ongoing sources of revenue, correct? Versus having a reserve that you can use for a year, maybe two years. But that doesn't get replenished every year and is not ongoing.
That's absolutely correct. So when you think about reserves, you think about things that you would match one-time dollars with. When you think about reserves, you think about times that we are having this year where our enrollment dropped. But we're still able to operate. We're not trying to scramble the current year to make budgets work. So that gives us that kind of, again, once small oracles in the water, not the big rapids. And that, that's what those reserves have accomplished. But using those dollars for long-term needs and long-term obligations like staffing, um, costs our ways to go up and down from here. Excellent point.
Thank you. And then, uh, quick question, Mike. Um, when I'm looking at, you know, there's a kind of a true up here with revenue in terms of loss of enrollment. Um, but also we're, we're spending less on the expense side, um, with the 1% holdback. How does that, um, affect the deficit that was budgeted, the 11, you know, 11.3 we see here? Is that what was budgeted? Is that less than what was budgeted? Is that more?
Probably less, about six million more.
Okay. So, so in essence, um, because of the holdback, we're actually a little bit ahead.
Correct. There's a, with the, with the three changes, getting unbalanced as Director, uh, Tim just mentioned. Um, the, the, the down in revenue and the saving coming.
Thank you for that work. Um, okay, next up, we have a summer school update with, uh.
Oh, is there a policy?
Oh, sorry. I, uh. I'm, I'm having trouble tonight.
Policy difference.
So let's do a review of policy DFA and we will keep Mike Schofield up here with us.
I'll be very quick about this. What this is, uh, a best practice in policy DFA, that's your investment policy. And remember, we received protein, uh, from, uh, selling volume earlier this summer. So we have over $300 million that we're currently investing. Um, we bring this to you and within this policy of states for resigning basis. So there is nothing changing from policy of 2017, but as a best practice, we put it in front of you, like you take a look at it. Uh, nothing to do for a year unless you have to go and offer a change.
Questions from the board? Becky?
Can you please share with me who, uh, advises us to make these kind of investments? I mean, we're, it's not something that's just done in order of a rule, correct?
Correct, correct. And we actually have a treasury specialist position that is currently open. So right now our finance manager, Lisa Gutrot, and myself are trying to manage this thing. Um, but we have an open position and in addition to that, we use advisors on buying the market. And, uh, we also, uh, um, share this investment policy on a routine basis. And definitely when you make any changes to it with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. I was a member of that short-term fund board and we reviewed both of those, this very then municipal, uh, investment policies. Is there a recommendation, uh, recommendation in terms of changes and what we might have done? Um, again, remember what we're doing here is we're going to, our goals in investing, school district funds is conservation of capital, number one, right? Like we want security and that's what this investment policy is.
That was just the point I was going to make. This is really an important piece of our revenue stream. And even though it's a complicated thing, um, that we have expertise and people who follow this. But if we did not, I mean, these funds are not just sitting there in a, in a bank account, getting a little caught. This is really complicated stuff, but it's so important to the solvency, uh, of the school district. So thank you very much, um, for keeping your eye on the ball.
Other questions from the board? I just want to take a moment to appreciate the robust financial controls you have in here. And the way that, you know, when we go out and invest with the school district, it is not like a regular person going out and grabbing a Merrill Lynch account. And throwing some darts at the board for their favorite stocks. We are very intentional about how we invest taxpayer dollars to make sure that they are safeguarded so that they actually produce a better outcome for our kids. And I know that you guys work really hard to make that happen. Um, quick question, Mike, this, this policy DFA, this is the same as it has been in past years, right?
Correct.
Great. So this is, this is a longstanding policy of financial controls that we've implemented in our district. And we appreciate you for, for continuing that practice. Great. Now, I promise this time I'm right. We have a summer school update. Dr. Heather Corey and Ms. Vanessa Davalos.
Superintendent Valverde, support members. It is our pleasure to get to share with you this evening an update about our summer school. And, um, I have the opportunity of getting to introduce Vanessa Davalos. Who was the administrator for extended learning and family engagement up until very recently. Um, before, um, before recently being promoted into her next career opportunity. Um, she served and led, um, the summer school programs this summer and did an amazing job of that. And now is serving as associate principal at William Walker Elementary. So, um, first and foremost, a big congratulations, Vanessa. We are very happy for you and very proud of you. Um, and with that, I'd like to turn, uh, the update over to Ms. Davalos.
Um, I have a wonderful presentation we showed you tonight, to show to you tonight. I just want to say this wasn't something I did alone on an island. It was to, this was an opportunity for operations and teaching and learning to come together across the system. And I'm going to mark and put together some wonderful programs for us to. So I'm so excited to share with you all of the knowledge and everything that we have from it. I was excited about your enthusiasm for summer programs. So I know you wanted to be up here earlier. Okay, so the first graph that you'll see in this, um, the number of students that we serve during our programs. And working with IT, we really set criteria on students who attended at least two days of their program. You have many different programs at all levels. So you'll see 1,800 students attending our kidder transition programs across the region, which is thirty, fifteen schools offered kidder transition. It last summer and this summer we have thirty schools offer kidder transition. So it's a really beautiful bit. Um, what you'll also see is that, um, uh, total amount of students that we served in all summer programs was 7,750. Served, um, sixty-six percent of student. We serve around twenty percent of students with disabilities are on 504 plans. We serve twenty-three percent of the adult students and six percent of the rich that we had at some of our dual language program. And out of all the migrants, you have thirty-five, thirty-six, forty-one percent. So we prioritize those that were historically underserved. Um, and made sure that we're looking at that data as we. Thank you. So I'll start with our first one, um, our E S Y program, our second school year, recovery services, um, previous cycling. Oh, there we go. Okay, so this, this program served kindergarten through age 21. Uh, special education students, 15 specialized programs. And these programs addressed many different needs from communication to motor skills. Um, and they were at Hazeldale this last summer. Um, with staff feedback, community feedback, student feedback. They utilize, they were able to utilize available curriculum, equipment, materials. They hired, they had enough staff to hire. I'm sure the bonus was a nice, um, addition to that. So they were able to recruit more staff for their program and they provided transportation to all students for their programs. Some of the requests that I'm thinking about as we plan for next year is having access to those meal programs that were offered by nutrition services this last. This last summer, so they're hoping to access that also. And again, start, um, I know Dr. Valverde and I have visited Hazeldale and, and that priority of accessing a program is something that I think. Is essential, um, aligning with our general programs. And then we also had our homicide management department offer one of the programs that were not only supplemental, but then separate programs that they wanted to offer. So, um, they, they part, they also partnered with PSU and volunteers in some of our middle school programs. And you can see some of the numbers there of students that they served, um, with the migrant education are, um, the American Indian Alaska Native Black Boys Camp. So those are just a few of those, um, smaller numbers for multi-language programs. When we look at feedback, um, it was wonderful because they were integrated into some of our general education programs. So they were supplemental, um, they were in-person and online. They did wonderful things that, that they had parent workshops that they offered. Um, and they utilize multilingual and multicultural staff in their programs, which I think is amazing. Um, one thing that we were working on or that we're beginning to work, our, our goal is to improve that coordination of all programs. Um, bring the administrator over E S Y and the administrator of M L T summer programs, as well as, um, the, that contact and teaching and learning. And start planning together and then increase some of those dual language options. And then we had our kindergarten academy and grade one through grade 12 programs. There you'll see how many students overall we served, um, we know that the 7,759 was a criteria set where students had to attend at least two days. So that's why you see a difference in the number. And then provided academic enrichment opportunities and then support services like childcare at elementary schools. Um, nutrition services will be able to support us. Um, some transportation that we could, as much as we could, um, with staffing. And then, um, you'll see that the high, offered high school options, eight point five, nine point five credit and completed. Uh, credit, we had 1,396 credits earned, which I think is, thank you for the small club. And then we had, um, for completed program, we had 160 credits.
That's great.
Um, we set it up to serve our kids this summer. And so some of the strengths was just, you know, we had $8 million from the summer learning grant. Uh, we offered hands-on career-related learning opportunities, established collaboration across grade levels. Manufacturing, um, high school students, served middle school students. Um, offered academic credit earning and enrichment opportunities. And we were able to use, utilize some of the funding to offer that bonus. Uh, which recruited a lot of our staff, um, towards the end. And then some of the things that we're thinking about is to planning early. And then we can provide transportation to all levels, which will take, will bring some creative thinking. So as we think about next steps, and I've shared this with Dr. Porter and Dr. Porter and the teaching and learning. So we need to start planning early. We need to start recruiting staff now. Staff and students early. We need to get them pumped up and excited about summer programs. Because what we know is that it is an essential part of student success, a central part of their journey. It seems like such a small part, but it is such a huge part to engage our students. Uh, nurture relationships, nurturing the whole child. nurture relationships, nurturing the whole child, promoting equity and anchored in community. And so some of the thinking we're, things we're thinking of is also what kind of data do we need to collect, provide evidence of success, right? So what data that will show all the great things that happened during the summer. And with that is that, you know, that summer learning grant will not be here every year. And so how are we as a district building long-term plans to serve our students during the summer who lead us the most? And with that, I'd like to leave you with this new experience video.
Good to you.
Camp Achieve at William Walker, the main goal, to be honest, was for us to have fun, to get engagement with students and also to have an opportunity for kids to get a little bit more exposure to some academic content as well.
Camp Achieve is a time for students to be able to come and refresh their skills in academics and make social connections with other kids, along with getting that small group connection that they don't always get in the school year.
Hi, my name is Ellie.
Hi, my name is Awesome.
Hi, my name's Camille.
And we're at Camp Achieve.
We do a lot of learning. We do a lot of reading and math. And my favorite part of being at Sexy Mountain is playing with my friends.
We really want kids to be excited about school and be excited about learning. And a big thing that we are working towards is making sure that that slimmer slide is as small and minimal as possible.
We have migrant pre-K. I've enjoyed just spending time in that classroom. We also have what we call We Walkers. That's our Kinder Academy. I have really loved seeing kids relaxed at school.
Today at Camp Achieve, what we did was art. What I love about coming to Camp Achieve is always meeting new friends and having a lot of fun activities.
Every morning and every afternoon, you can see smiles on their faces. They are not coming here because they're being forced to come here. They're coming here because they are having fun. They're enjoying spending time with their friends while also learning in a way that they don't usually get to during the school year.
What I love to come into summer school is that we do fun stuff, but also going at the same time.
Extended school year supports and services students receiving IEP services and special education. And those classroom students are working on academics. We have a P E teacher here. This summer has been awesome. I am really just appreciative of all of our staff.
We've got culinary arts going on. We have C T E for our incoming eighth graders. Our art class is doing tie dyeing today. And we also have kids that are practicing lockers because all of our students next year, because of COVID, have never experienced lockers. So that's one of our activities that all the classes get to do. You're seeing a different side of the kids. There's less pressure. There's no grades. So they're literally experiencing things that are applicable to their lives.
I'm working on the iPads in summer school, just taking pictures, finding something and just having fun.
Today, Anita Plant, we're working on cross stitching. I'm working on Mexican colors in a heart. I've been having fun coming to summer school because there's a lot of nice people here and you get to meet new friends.
Today, you are seeing the newcomer program here at South Ridge High School. The purpose of the program is to support students who are recent arrivals in the United States and who also have interrupted formal education sometime in the past. The summer program focuses on mathematics. So students in this classroom are studying their algebra, geometry, statistics, level one or two, depending on what they need.
So this class is called Science of Coffee. We test out different types of coffee, different types of beans. We're measuring the mass and also the volume. So we do mass divided by volume and we get our density there. I really like this class because every day we're hands-on. We're tasting, smelling new things. It's very interesting, very engaging, it's very fun.
We have Five Oaks Middle School kids that they're on an exploratory program. And then we have the Westview Manufacturing Students that came back to be mentors and teachers assistants and others that just wanted to get more shotgun.
We get to take a manufacturing class over at Westview. So we take the bus here every day. It's been really fun to work with the older students because they teach us a lot and it's pretty cool. Today was my first day doing welding and it's actually really fun and I'm actually pretty good at it. I really like going to summer school because we're not doing schoolwork and we're doing fun stuff.
All right, welcome everyone. I call to order the.
When I really enjoyed the video and congratulate you, it looked like it was very successful, summer, summer school. Two, I wanted just to point out your comment about where the funding is gonna come from next year. I mean, that's a big concern of mine because I can see the benefits big time. I would think that we would need to go to the state to, you know, show examples of what happened in Beaverton with this funding that we had and say, look, we need to continue to fund this. And the last thing I would say is this would be nice to have this curriculum year round so that students have that opportunity because it's obviously learning experiences in a different way. So it would be great for our students to have that opportunity throughout the school year to have those, you know, for all students to have that type of opportunity. So again, I just congratulate you on what you've done. I also wanna emphasize, I would love to see these programs. I know it's expensive. So that's the problem with that, but it's what a great way to learn.
Thank you, Ms. Davalos, and congratulations on your new position. My question for you is, the summer program, was it available to every student? And also, how do you determine what students, which students get to participate?
Yeah, we had many different summer programs happening across the system at once. We have Plan S I S V, Terranova's Harvest Work Experience, Earth Create Academies happening across an elementary school. And then M L D have programs like their migrant pre-K and other migrant programs as well, like their native lifeways. And so particularly to the funding to this eight million dollar grant, we, we were prioritizing students with disabilities and those who have been historically underserved. And so what we did is we invited the experts in our schools and leaned on our schools to tell us based on their data and how they know their students, who, what's, who, what's the students that would most benefit from the programs. And so that's where we started, when we started recruiting. In the end, we could have served more kids, but I think we recruited a little later. And so we tried to get those that we, and then if there were any left, that we tried to reach out to families and tried to get as many recruited for.
Thank you very much.
Good job. Thank you.
So, Anita.
Thanks for the presentation. It's like a fun program. You kind of touched my question and maybe you can, with, with the eight million dollars funding that you had this year, what was your level of need and the level of service that you could provide? What was the need? If you have, like, how many people applied and how many people actually got served? Do you have that data?
Yeah, so as you'll see is that we have, the data in itself is eight thousand one hundred and thirty-two students like enrolled, applied. And then the ones that ended up attending, like, we were able to serve as many that applied and said they were wanting to attend. But again, we focused first and prioritized those students with disabilities and those who have been historically underserved. And then ended up, the total after those who had enrolled and who actually attended was the seven thousand seven hundred and fifty-nine.
Okay, so, so your plan for next year is that you want to start planning early so that more people would apply, but the funding is not there? Is that, am I right in that, the eight million dollars funding?
Yes. And so what, what we're gonna do with that is we've got an expert in Ms. Davalos to really help us prepare and think about the steps we need to take early and by when we need to take those. And we need to couple that with having this be, in addition to advocacy that Director Greenberg noted, we need to engage in the conversations internally about making this a budget priority and what that will look like moving forward. But we will not miss a beat in preparing for next summer regardless.
Thank you. Sounds good.
All right.
Hola, felicidades. And I just, I was really excited. I actually got to visit with her. We got to go to several of the middle schools and the high schools and it was just phenomenal to watch. Our teachers were super excited. So thank you to all those teachers that stepped up and took on summer work. They were creating their own curriculum. And so I, what I saw was teachers, like kids using like board games to learn statistics. I saw hands-on dissections of like hearts and other things in biology courses. I saw middle schoolers at Meadow Park, just super excited to be there. The teachers were excited. And so some of those pieces were that we were able to have the smaller class sizes for them and that we had also that curriculum that was hands-on and learning the same concepts that we would learn, same standards, but in different ways. And now those teachers can use that curriculum during the school year as well, what they were mentioning. So that's exciting. It's exciting to see so much credit recovery. And I'm wondering if that's an area that we still need to grow some more because there's more possibilities there to have more students be able to recover that credit. And then I saw that you were looking at increasing the dual language options, which I think is really exciting as we grow our dual language programs across the district. And then I think it would be great to be able to increase our migrant student participation as well. There's districts that have had, that I see have pull-out programs for all of their migrant students. And I understand we've been able to put some of our migrant students who participated in other programs, but it would be great to be able to track to make sure that we're addressing their needs. And again, I just wanna thank teachers for stepping up and our our classified staff and just, it was just, it was really beautiful to see. So thank you for that invitation too.
Thank you, Dr. Perez. I can't tell you enough, you know, I started March sixteenth and I came into a system that was ready to start these programs. And it was so beautiful how such a large system could come together as a not only to just inform me and next steps, but to come together. This is operations, this is human resources. This is, this is transportation. All working together to give our students the best programs that we could give them. And so it was a we effort, for sure. And we came together and we stepped up this summer. So I am extremely proud of every teacher. Yes, four days a week. That is not bad. Every teacher, every classified staff, every family and every student that entered into our go-hoods. To be served. I just, I am amazed by our community and everything that we did for our students this summer.
I also wanted to say, if I had the opportunity, and first of all, if it starts with leadership and enthusiasm, Vanessa, you have that getting out the door.
Right.
Every place I've visited, your enthusiasm, it was just unbelievable for me to see teachers after having such a rough year, how enthusiastic they were, classified that had such a rough year, the front office all the way, that they wanted to be there. The students knew that they wanted to be there. But I was able to ask along the way, how did students, how did students get there? And they said that they would recommend, teachers would recommend, but it had to be, but it looked like it was because we recruited a little bit later and it was the transportation and asked. And I also asked in every building whether it would be the elementary or the high school that we do not have the funds. This was a grant and we're gonna have to budget for that. And it may be that we have to give up something else, but this may be for us as, as a board, it become, does it becomes a value for us? Is it a cultural change for us? Is it part of our strategic plan? And this, these are the kind of decisions that we make as a board, policy-wise, that we are, are we going to match our dollars with what we say? But it, every single thing has to be, be paid for. But it wasn't for the enthusiasm, the need for the kids. But I am very much the credit recovery. And we were doing credit recovery before summer school. But our students are going to need this. The students after COVID, for us to get them over the finish line, we need to support them every way we can. And so even if it has to be a modification or whatever, but this is something we as a board are going to have to decide, is this a value of ours? But thank you so much for your, for your great work and congratulations on your, on your new position.
I'll add one thought too. I think Corinne, you had something and then Eric.
As you move on to your new position, I wanna make sure that we have people who are gonna be taking over that, that's, that work as you move on to that other position. I heard you saying that, that you're already connecting and you're figuring out what needs to be happening when in that timeline. So I think it'll be great to see maybe later where we are in a few months in that planning. That would be great to hear back.
Absolutely.
Eric.
Thank you so much, my founder. But it looks like this is a great program for the summer slide and maybe the COVID slide. So you mentioned a little bit that you're gonna try to figure out maybe markers or see some kind of like data to show like the results on these eight thousand students or seventy-seven hundred students. So do you have that in mind for how you can prove the value of the program since it's gonna be probably really valuable? But it's gonna be competing against other resources. Just, you know, if you want eight million a year, that's gonna be tough. So you have to have the, that data to show because it's gonna be a trade-off like Becky was mentioning, you know, because something's more valuable, this might be it, and something else might have to drop down in value.
Yeah, and I, I second what you're saying. It would be great to see how many students were, you know, falling behind in terms of their credits prior to the summer school programs. And then how many students are, you know, on track or a higher percentage of being on track afterwards? That would be great data when we're looking at this, especially around budget time. But, I say it again, Eric.
I always think of John and all the data and all the backend analytics.
Look at he's smiling back there.
You'll have the data markers.
Absolutely. And just to get a sense of, of the, the scale of what you did, the prior school year, how many students were we serving in our, our summer programs?
As far as I can, and, and looking far back when I started, that I saw this number, maybe it was like four thousand, five thousand?
Okay, so you effectively.
Doubled.
Yeah, almost doubled the program.
Well, I had a remarkable story to share.
And I just wanna highlight how big that is after two years of pivot, pivot, pivot with the pandemic to be able to make that next change and show that flexibility to be able to serve our students and to scale up a program like that is incredible. So thank you for all that hard work and thank you to everyone who participated in the program, to your point, that it took a whole team.
Yeah, everybody was stepped up for our team this summer.
Great, awesome, great. Thank you. Let's see, next up, we have some school reports. So we have twenty minutes set aside for each of these school reports. We'll hear for five or 10 minutes from school administrators, then we'll have time left over for questions from the school board members. The, the first school is Greenway Elementary with Principal Witten.
Good evening, Superintendent Valverde and school board. We're just gonna keep the celebration going. We just heard about summer school. And now I'm.
And now I am thrilled to be able to start with celebration of what's happening in the schools. So my name is Ken Queens Ginnmore and I am an elementary exec. And I get to oversee twelve elementary schools, one of them being um Greenway Elementary. So I'd love to introduce to you, Jen has been at Greenway since two thousand and nineteen. Um, and one of the things I can say is not only issue a principal, but she is the lead learner at that school, so thank you very much.
Thank you for having me here to share about the great things happening at Greenway. Um, I have been at Greenway since um, January of two thousand and nineteen and it's a pretty amazing community um where people just lend, jump in whatever your original needs. So um, I think I have some slides up. Um, so this is Sunny, she is in our kindergarten right now, which she was also in pre-k for the pre-k at Greenway. And we had, I believe, at the last count, thirteen pre-k students starting up kindergarten this year, which is very amazing. Um, so the time period of of COVID was challenging for our community, but for me as a leader, my goal was that we could and and I do believe we did emerge stronger um from the pandemic. It was a trend for us to really strengthen the relationships that we have with our families um and our students. And we also um, during this time coming back from COVID, there are a couple of things that we did during the pandemic um to really strengthen our practices. But the one thing that we have is um our um, the staffing changes that we were able to make with S R funding. And um, I have able to bring on a three-site program coach um who is able to support the students coming back from the pandemic who needed um, support with reading and now, and then also with the student investment, um, ultimate social worker. And Richard Ramirez does incredible work to just help families find the support that they need. And having that position in our school called time has been incredible. Um, another change that we made was really a lot of self-awareness about our emotions and how our emotions impact everything that we do, starting with our adult emotions and then working with our children as well. And I think just having the language really helped their school come back because we talk a lot about um, what is it looking to be our best selves? How do we, um, what happens when we're not our best selves and what are the practices that we have in place for um, for restoration? When we haven't been our best selves and we need to um, do some perspective-taking and problem-solving. So that work that we did during COVID um was just a real big guide into self-awareness for staff and students. And it feel like it helped us to come back last fall um in a really good place with increasing the language that we have around how our emotions affect us. And we also did a four-part hearing series last year, so working with our families um to, that my student success coach Lauren Sinster taught. Um, and it was a four-part series to help families understand how emotions impact their family and how they can increase communication. Um, and eighteen families participated in that and great feedback. We will do it again this spring. Um, the middle picture here is um, we move a lot at Greenway. We were a highleta school for marathon kids. Last year, we ran over eleven thousand miles and um, four hundred and fifty-five marathons. So this year, we have already run over thirteen hundred miles in our first student, that was first marathon last week. Um, so thanks to Celia Whitehead, she's our PD chair and PD co-sa, she's done a remarkable um work in giving us for this. Um, so our next piece that I think makes Greenway really strong are our partnerships. We have a really strong partnership with the Oregon Food Bank. Um, we were a key um, support for them, for our families during the pandemic and families just in the area. And then we continue to have our pantry operating um bi-monthly. We serve about forty to fifty families. Um, we also have a a partnership with Metropolitan Family Services with the Twenty First Century Century Grant um that has an after-school program and there are about thirty-five students enrolled in that right now. Um, and then a new partnership for us is with the Twalatin River National Wildlife Refuge. Last year, we partnered with them to teach lessons on site. Um, they also have volunteers from Friends of the Refuge come the first Friday of every month to birdwatching with our students. And then students with their support also went out to the refuge, K five, all having experience at the refuge. Now you can see the picture here on the right. This is Sue People. This is first grade classroom. Each class took on a changemaker project, something that would connect them with helping um become a change for, that would support like um, environmental change or in our public lands. So this class, I looked at there was just a lot of garbage at Greenway and we needed another garbage can. So they wrote letters to Anthony Ordway and he delivered a garbage can and then they painted it and so we have that now. So the idea that our students can be a change.
That's great.
Um, in the world. Um, so the next one is what we're working on this year is also who we are, attendance is our number, one of my number one goals. Um, increasing the number of regular attenders. And then another goal is just our collective efficacy with our teachers. We already have strong efficacy, but we're just making sure that we have systems in place. Um, first teachers are collaborating, um, all groups and stakeholders. And then, um, lastly, our data here shows our, was that data as a checkpoint in time? And I did want to highlight there was math, that we were aware that math was really challenging to teach with children at home. And so there were some things that we did last year to build in some more responsive data that would help influence our instructional practice throughout the year. Um, so we just had a great PD on Friday and was amazed at what the teachers were doing. And then lastly here, um, is a snapshot of our school charter. And um, we center it around how we want to feel at Greenway and that's words that are driven from students um and from staff. So the students at Greenway want to feel joyful, they want to feel included, they want to feel valued, safe and helpful. And this is language that we use um throughout the day and checking in what we're feeling that way and what we're not feeling that way. And I could say that we often feel very joyful there. It's a great spot. Thank you.
At this time, we're going to open it up for questions from the new view.
Uh, Ogana.
Hi, um, Jennifer, thank you so much. Um, you're doing such an amazing work at Greenway. And um, I was just bimming with smiles when we were sharing, so thank you so very much. But I just have to um ask you about um the participation rates. I always like to look at that data. And um, the numbers are a little, um, when you look at the annual survey responses where it talked about parents reporting their feel from invaluable as active partners in their child's education. That number went really down in twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, I was wondering what caused that and if there's anything you could do to bring it up. And also um, looking at teachers and staff reporting that contribute to school decision that also went down. I mean, it was hundred percent in twenty twenty, twenty-one. I'm just curious as to what happened. You know, to make that number go down to seventy-seven percent, if you could, you know, shed more light on that.
Yeah, I see. The inherent one was um, I had to do some thinking when I saw that data point over the summer when I got my parent surveys. Um, one thing, what I think was that I had consistently sent out a parent message um to the community. And then the transitions to Parents Square, I paused it because I felt it was sort of like a feed. I could just send out messages that were just like, here's what's happening, um, but I didn't have a consistent newsletter. Um, that was a message just from me because I was just continually updating the Parents Square feed. And then in January, a parent asked, like, can you bring back your newsletter? We really just liked the pictures that you put in the newsletter. So after I found that number, I um, created a different template for a newsletter in Parents Square because the one I had been using was difficult to access for the different languages that we have. So with Parents Square now, I've been able to send that consistent message. So I may do a couple of other things, but I may also just be a bit that one, making sure I'm consistently every week sending a message to the families and see if that helps as well.
That's what.
And then uh, with the staff, I'm not sure. I do my own survey as well. Um, that goes a little bit more deeply into the work that we're doing. So that, that data was from the one that is put out by the district um. And I didn't have a minimum response, so I do need to make sure that I'm giving some sort of incentive, like our staff meeting set aside so teachers are filling that out. Um, but this, the survey that I had, um, there were a couple of things that I got feedback on, especially on committees. So when I started the year, I was really clear with the teachers, like I, I read your um, feedback on committees. And this is what I'm thinking you need to do. And so um, they, I got some good response right away that they felt that I listened to them about that.
Awesome. Thank you so very much.
All right.
Hey, thanks for having me. Um, I'm wondering, you mentioned that you're working on increasing attendance and so I'm wondering what are some of those pieces that you're working on that are going well and some, what are some of those things that you're still like trying to figure puzzles, just trying to figure out with regards to attendance?
Yeah, so our team, thank you. It's been um, last year, we really saw a decrease in attendance and it was trying to figure out, was that because, you know, they had to stay home for five days? Or was it all students who just became accustomed to being home and so getting back to school on a regular basis? Um, so over the summer, um, with my counselor and social worker, we um wrote an empathy interview and set up a series of steps that we're taking with families. So what's going well so far is that I'm able to also track who are our students that really need that those connections, multiple connections. Um, and then we've already invited in several families to kind of just talk to them about what the barriers are, what we can do. And um, we are seeing some, some kids really that we didn't have coming last year as regularly, needing to attend. And then when they're at school, matching them up with someone who's going to reach out and look out for them. I tiered it as well though, because we did have some students last year with fifty to sixty percent attendance. So their goals aren't all the way up to ninety percent, but up to eighty percent to really help them out.
Thank you.
Oh, Eric and then Susan.
All right, thanks for the report. Um, have you seen the impact of the summer academy for some of the people in your um, in your school that went through the program this summer?
Yeah, I did. We were actually just talking about, um, we gave a course screener for phonics and a, um, a spelling inventory. And what we noticed was that kids held steady, like they didn't necessarily grow, but we didn't see the loss. So that would be one point that I could see. Um, we've had summer school because we have the Twenty First Century Grant. So it was just great to continue with solidly robust programming as well.
Susan.
I just have to comment in general, I love Greenway. I love going to Greenway. Um, I did have the opportunity to visit um last week and I'm, I'm honored to be there and you have a really good engaged community and I just wanted to comment on that and it's always good seeing you, Jennifer.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I too wanted to say the same thing. Um, you know, Susan's school is my neighborhood, so I get to check in quite a bit. And uh, again, like so many of our elementary principals, um, I am always amazed. Uh, I think it's very uh great that you emphasize joyful because that is what I feel when I walk into Greenway. And you again, as a building leader, you'll be talking to her and every child that walks by, she knows their names, she knows where they're supposed to be and where they're not supposed to be. Uh, and she redirects uh all-in-one fell swoop. I was also going to ask uh about attendance. Um, and you answered that, but I'm wondering if you think that that has a direct correlation with some of the math scores? If a, if a student is not there, does that make it harder for them to learn these very skills that they have to scaffold and 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 go from, do you, in your opinion?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're just, you know, working, um, it's getting students there and then in a place where they're feeling safe and feeling included to then be able to do the learning piece. So the work that we're doing to get the school to feel, you know, that they've got um, a relationship with their teacher so that they're engaged. And then, and then that work of learning really begins. So I, I do think so. I think it was, it was just a challenge in remote learning to have our students learning from each other with math. Math is so much about different strategies and working collaboratively. And so we knew that we really needed to. And then even last fall, I would say with masks on and distancing, it was hard. Like, what, what did they say? I'm not sure what they were saying. So this year, we are really, really strengthening our practices in our math talk with student discourse. That was a lot of what our PD was on on Friday. And then also making sure that we have some checkpoints along the way that that we're creating um that really are showing us like, are we improving here? Are students using the strategies that we want them to use? And then working like on a K five continuum. But the attendance piece is just, it's something that is um, every, it's one family at a time.
I, I think your staff does an excellent job with that. You feel the sense of family and that there's no child that is falling through the cracks there, that your staff is right on top of making sure that every, and then the last thing I want to ask, how are those uh full walls uh suiting you guys?
Yeah, it's great. How did the Greenway glow up? Um, because we really thank you, the, to the taxpayers for our Greenway glow. We have walls. And we have green paint and we got a new roof and the H M system is big and then we're getting a new control system back. It looks great.
Oh, thanks. I've got one more question for you, Principal Witten. Um, but, but first, uh, just a comment. Thank you for your leadership through a very difficult pandemic. I know that it, that has been difficult for our staff and being a building leader during these topics is particularly difficult. So thank you for your leadership. Um, I'm thinking about the, this year, um, you know, like uh moving on from the test scores from last year and I'm thinking about this year. Um, what is your experience with student behaviors this year? Are you seeing improvement from past years, kind of the same? What are you facing at the building level?
Um, right now, I think um, the, the work that we've done to really help all of us understand the role that our emotions are playing, everything's simple. Um, it feels better. It really does. It feels better. It feels, schools feel so much better this year. I think that the stress of not worrying about who's three feet apart here and six feet apart there, it does feel a lot better. And I think our students feel a lot more prepared, um, especially having kids that go on pre-k and kindergarten. And so overall, it feels a lot better this year.
Thank you for that update and thank you for your report.
Just really quickly before you leave, I, I just want to thank um Ms. Witten and our leaders from Kennamann who will be up here um just in a few moments, um, for being the first this year to share um the school reports and and the preparation that goes into that and no doubt that the anxiousness that goes into that and um excitement around sharing the bright spots and also being vulnerable and talking about what it is that we're working on. And so you are um so, so busy and have such huge jobs. And so to you and our Kennamann colleagues, um, I just really want to appreciate um that you are, are doing this with us this evening and what that felt like to be, to be first up. So thank you.
Right, next up we have uh Principal Hudson and um, I guess Associate Principal Roberto. I hope I have not mixed those two up. If I have, I apologize.
Good evening.
You're right.
Dr. Hudson. School board, really great to be here tonight. My name's Patrick Banks. I am one of the elementary attendees as well. And I've got eleven schools and I am super honored to be uh, work with Ashley and Armin over at Kennamann. They are just doing fabulous work over there. They are tremendously thoughtful leaders and they're very excited tonight. They have been together as a team now for five years at Kennamann and uh, we all got to start together, which was fabulous. And we're going to share the highlights and the, the work they're folks on this year. So I'll turn it over to my Dr. Hudson.
Thank you so much for having us. We have a lot to celebrate at Kennamann right now. Staff are totally amazing, but we can talk a lot of things. So we are actually just going to zip through a few things. Our school's focus on joy, relationship, belonging and community and our commitment to dismantling systems that have historically understood particular groups of students are what we're highlighting tonight. Um, at Kennamann, we use our title dollars to fund a STEAM teacher and that's just really to enhance our specials rotation. Um, STEAM is an approach to education that combines science, technology, that's um, I missed engineering, um, but also mathematics to really guide student inquiry, decision-making and problem-solving. And our students through STEAM are being empowered to be more curious learners who will learn to problem-solve in creative ways that involve things other than Googling something. So really critically thinking and digging into the process. One of the things that we're finding at Kennamann is the students that have been historically marching, particularly students with disabilities and our students who have emerging multilingual skills are stepping up as leaders and really um thriving and steaming. To the point where they're enjoying it so much, the hands-on learning, the opportunities to think and problem-solve in different ways that um, they're creating those opportunities to participate in projects outside of the specials rotation. So they will say, I want to do this, I'm a respec or I want to come in after school for K three D and continue that learning and just um, they're nerding out over it and it's really fun to watch. Um, we have some other ways in which our kids are engaging in inquiry beyond STEAM and learning to problem-solve in different And learning to problem solve in different ways. And one of the the things that we've really noticed this year, our our kindergarten team in particular. Is really diving into the playful inquiry work. They are loving the direction our district is going. And we're seeing an impact on our youngest learners. Um, what we're noticing right now through this focus on. Really coming together and learning to think creatively and problem solve with other students in class, their social skills are developing. At a much more accelerated late uh rate than some of our other learners are. And they're actually um already by Oc- mid-October. In certain ways, their social skills are further along than students in older grades right now. So that is one hopeful thing that we're getting out of this. It's not just the focus on academics. Yes, that's important. And yet, when we're teaching kids to think through play. Um, it's really having an impact as well. We're expanding um that promising practice to other grade levels. By having a soft start in the mornings at Kenan to get things going. It's helpful for relationship building with the staff. Um, and also gives kids a chance to just connect with each other, kind of chill at the beginning, which is which is helpful. Um, we're really hopeful that this will have a positive impact on the socialization of our children. Who missed out on a lot of social connections over the pandemic um and have a positive impact on the behavior. Um, as you know, behavior and safety have been a hot button topic at schools for. Quite a few years, but especially the last few. Um, at Kenan, we are really committed to taking an anti-oppressive approach. To challenging behavior in our classrooms and across the school. Um, we're digging into our shared values of cultivating joy, relationships, belonging and community. But we're also taking a three-pronged approach to discipline in accordance with the B S C code of conduct. So first and foremost, making sure that we're explicitly teaching and reteaching the expectations that we have in our students. Also focusing on understanding emotions, managing feelings. Um, and exercising responsible decision-making through social emotional learning. And then finally, we're really cultivating. Uh, community through healing, through the use of restorative practices. And with restorative practices, we're able to power with our students and construct accountability. Um, in a way that provides them more equitable access to the classroom because they get to stay in class more. And connect with the other kids. Um, there are two main focuses that we have for our school learning plan. We experienced a similar issue with um attendance that we can come back to later as well. But we just want really want to ensure that our curriculum, instruction and assessments are being implemented. In accordance with the current adoptions. We have an awesome adoption process in this district. And the more that we are utilizing that curriculum in the way it's intended, uh, the better like chances our kids have. Um, so in addition to that, and just exactly with that, um, we're also ensuring that all of our students have access to core instructions. So I'm not denying its access by pulling them out for other groups. Knowing that they need to be there regardless of what their ability level or their language acquisition is. And then we're also um enhancing our collaboration at Kenan by creating multidisciplinary teams. Um, these teams, we have a variety of them and they're just really targeted on specific. Um, needs that might be unique to Kenan, might be shared amongst other schools. Um, and then we are implementing a special schedule every eight weeks to expand the amount of time that our staff have to actually collaborate. With one another, dig into data and actually have an opportunity to learn together that's longer than thirty or forty minutes. Which just isn't enough time most of the time to really dig in. Um, as for our data, as you can see, we have a beautifully diverse school community. Um, and we do feel a great sense of urgency um in finding meaningful ways to address our access opportunity. Um, and expectation gaps that are evident in our academic achievement data. But we do believe that by enhancing our collaboration, practicing our shared values. And strengthening our core instruction while providing kids more assistance in that rigorous instruction that we're going to significantly accelerate. I'm all done with that if you have questions.
Questions on the board? Um, Ugana?
Thank you so much, Dr. Hudson. I appreciate your presentation. I love this team. Is that is that like a program? This STEAM program that you talked about where you um engage today's school leadership? That's a beautiful program. I love the sound of it. So keep it up. Thank you very much. And um I know the amazing things that are happening in Kenan. That's really exciting to hear and um. I'm happy to see that. So just like I did the Greenway, I'm gonna ask about the um. There were engagement data that I have here for uh teachers. The 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 number is also low and um wondering if you could do anything to improve the numbers. And then I'm looking at um. Absence and exclusion measures. We have students missing class due to suspensions. An expulsion, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two is seven. While eighteen and nineteen is one. So wondering if also something could be done to bring down. That number is is a bit higher weight compared to your eighteen and nineteen. And um, yeah, those are the numbers that I have concerns with. So if there's anything you could do to make them better next time.
Yes, absolutely. Um, just for a little bit of context, in terms of the teaching staff reporting they contribute to school decision making. We have an advisory council at our school that yes, has administrators on it, but it has classified and written by representatives from every team in our school. Any decision that impacts um the broader community goes through that advisory council. Um, representatives go back and get information and some insight from their colleagues and bring that forward as part of the decision-making process. I think that I personally, as a leader, could do a better job of being very explicit when. Um, we are trying to elicit some sort of response from the staff and so that it doesn't seem like it's just following so heavily on the advisory councils. So that's that's one thing that we can do. Um, our staff kind of gets over surveyed a lot. And so we have to be careful about the ways in which we survey people and get information. Because it can feel like just another thing to do and exhausting and not quite as meaningful depending on the way that we are gathering that information. So we kind of do a little bit of dance to make sure that our staff, yes, feel like they're being, their opinions are being valued. And they have input on the decision-making process without being like, oh, my gosh, I have to survey this below. Um, with respect to the suspension and expulsion um information. What I can say is if. Not to go too far into detail on specific incidents, but if there is an issue where there's, say, a very public. Um, bite where multiple people are injured, um, there is a tendency in order to try to keep the school community safe. And in order to um put forth a a plan to move forward safely and to make sure that we can repair any crap done through. Restorative circles with the classes, with our counselors, with our social worker, um, and the rest of our V H and W team. Uh, we try to be really thoughtful about the ways that we can deal harm with the community. Um, and make sure that people are actually physically going to be safe and spaces coming back. And so um sometimes it looks like a lot, but it's um several students for a very minimal amount of time to to make sure that we can get kids back. Um, but we do try as much as we can to make sure that people are feeling safe. And they're also able to access instruction in the classroom.
All right.
Hey, hi. Thank you for your report. I was really excited to see that you you found a way to break that puzzle of collaboration for teachers. I know that um as I visit my school, people that people um find challenging is how do you break that, make that puzzle? So they can actually have time to collaborate. Um, and so um that's exciting to hear. I'd love to see how it goes and um how they're using that time. And then um I got the opportunity to visit a couple of um schools with that playful inquiry. And I think that's it was such an amazing um way to see kids, exactly what you described, like they're collaborating, they're building relationships, they're being creative. They're using all sorts of vocabulary that other would not be um using. And so um it's also great for our English language learners to have that twenty-nine percent to be developing language. So um just thank you. And you know, at some point, I'll come visit and see your playful inquiry. That's the idea, growing it. As you're seeing success with your students, I think that will help increase your M L A and build a better world on language development. So it's all network.
Um, Sunita?
Thanks for the presentation. Um, I I really liked uh what you all are doing to get the students engaged. And teachers' collaboration and the teachers, because it all matters. And um. Um, I'm I'm a bit concerned about the achievement gaps that the students have in math and English and um. And it's a big school compared to other elementary schools, so I can understand, you know. But um since you have been a principal in that school for five years, do you think this achievement gap? Was it similar before COVID or is it, has it become worse? Because all we are seeing, the comparison between. The school and the um state numbers. So if you think back, is it, has it gone down? And also, what what new things are you doing to make sure that this gets better? You know, for the students?
Yes, thank you for that question. I share your concern and urgency around our achievement data. Um, our data has gotten pretty significantly worse from COVID. Um, and as I said, we are really working on. During the pandemic, you did a fab- fabulous job of connecting with kids, making sure that they felt important and knew that they were cared for and loved. Um, we are struggling a little bit with an attendance issue where people kind of got into a habit of not coming to school. Um, and so we are working, we have an appointment. Um, Northwest Regional E S D has an attendance advisor that will come and do a consult with a school team. Um, talk about interventions that can be tried and and some other avenues that we didn't go over. So we actually during conferences coming up, have that meeting scheduled. So we'll start a revamp of our attendance process. We really just kind of met people where they were at and like to make sure that we were avoiding anything that might come across as shame or blame. Um, as people navigated a very tricky situation. Um, and you know, families are doing the best that they can. And always do the best they can and and want their kids to achieve. So we just have some work to do to make sure that we are able to start. Yes, supporting the families, but also prioritizing the importance of being at school because since we fall behind when they're not attending. Um, we're also getting back to making sure that our teachers are implementing the core. There was a lot of flexibility during COVID. Um, and we're saying, you know, our equity work is actually implementing our core. Adoption that we have. There was a reason that we adopted the curriculum. Um, and yes, we need to make sure that we. Everything we can to be culturally responsive and meeting the kids where we're at. But we also can't have an expectation that is is lower um because. Then we're just not expecting our kids to rise. They're not broken. They're gonna be great. Um, but we do need to make sure that we're holding them to a high standard. That they improve it.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right.
And I did note, Carmen, is it what was the most exciting thing so far this year for you?
Well, you actually, when you come, you have to come with it, so that you feel, but it uh it is, it's the joy. Families are excited to have their kids back. I'm excited that my kids are back in school. I think that um the community in general has really stepped up. And um our parents um have, you know, done a lot of outreach. We have a one K T O that's playing community members together too. Um, and and kids just, they want to be in school. So you can feel it when you're there. Um, they 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 have joy when they're with their peers, um, the learning that's happening in the classrooms. Uh, you you feel it any anywhere that you walk into the building and um teachers are really excited to be there. Kenan has um a historically um uh large population of teachers that have returned over and over and over again. Um, because they they love being there. Um, and it it is a welcoming community and it's a place that. Um, kids are really supported and um and and it feels, it feels great to be there.
Yeah.
Nice.
I just want to say thank you for all of your leadership over these really, really difficult years. And I'm repeating myself here, but it is equally applicable to um what you guys are doing at Kenan as as Greenway. Um, so that is noticed and appreciated. Um, I'm interested in your STEAM program. What things are possible with a STEAM teacher in this school that you you couldn't do otherwise with your regular specials rotation? What what, how does that extend out the learning for the kids? And what's the major impact of that?
So one of the things that is different is that by using our title funds to then um. On the certified teacher, you've got someone that's got a teaching license that's in there and sure can hit on the digital tools and things like that. But also has been an earlier adopter of um TWIG. And even during the pandemic, then um it was a way that we had a teacher that could actually relieve our other teachers of saying. Don't worry about science. I've got science right now. It's not actually possible as part of the specials rotation as it is. But initially, it was a way that our kids could keep getting uh science instruction and teachers could really dig deep and focus on on some other content areas. Um, our STEAM teacher is just full of life. And oh my goodness, I mean, even goes and connects with kids to plant things on the weekends. And is constantly, if they have great ideas for three printing and things like that, he's always willing to drop everything to kind of help them out. To um have them tinker and try. And sometimes things literally look like they blow up after they print out. But um it's always working with the kids to um improve those. And I don't know, it's just his his life. And the way that he and the kids is also something that's just.
Can I just ask a clarifying quick question? Cause I heard you say TWIG. And so, of course, I. Damn, where am I right now? I'm on Zoom in my head, sorry. Um, big science, um, is that an interactive education program online? When I look it up, that's what it looks like, but is that what it is?
Yeah, we have a, we have a science adoption and the.
What does TWIG mean?
That's the name of the science.
Oh, oh, okay. That that was something special. It is special.
Thank you so much. Report new time to make. Um, next up, we have twenty minutes for enrollment report and we got. I I think I'm handing, maybe we should take a five-minute break here. We'll recess for five minutes and then we'll come back again at uh eight twenty-three.
Okay. And Robert, why don't you get started?
Time for some improv.
Please.
Can you speak a little bit louder?
I think the mic might be off, Robert.
I think it's on.
I think it's on, you just need to speak.
Thank you.
Snooze you lose.
And this Carrie is walking over. We heard the Mike report previously that we were down by 500 students. A part of Robert's presentation this evening will capture that information for you. And primarily from your packet this evening, you had your board package. We're going to cover primarily the information on the first. A lot of the other data in here slices and dice. Except the information, but it takes several hours to go through in detail. But certainly happy to follow up with anybody who has questions on these topics in the future or over the course of next week. So this is going to be something we're going to be watching closely throughout the courses with that.
Okay, so our first slide that corresponds to the first. For it shows the previous year enrollment in 2021, 22. What was projected, that's the central column. And what we projected for our, for our enrollment is actually declined from 2021 to 2022. Overall district wide of about 29%. The actual decline was. Pretended to decline, but it might even bring even. The 500 student. What about that is more 93, that is the projection error. That is the difference between what. So that is, that is the gap in the enrollment. I apologize for the font size. Probably in the future. This shows the one that if you love the directionality of each projected and each break. In the garden has a red box on that, that is the grade level. This is the grade level which we projected to slightly increase. To establish my assumption that some additional kindergarteners would turn to us as the intent of the data. In fact, the moment the burden was lower than expected. And this is the biggest gap in. All of the other grade levels were projected to either increase or decrease by certain. And in most cases, their increase was not as high as we projected would increase. So far ahead on the writing side of this. So you expect it to decline, but we fell further than we actually wanted to. We didn't want to decline at all. The next one, there was, and it was before February. The black line shows you enrollment. The red circle shows where we are today. That's, that's like a 12 enrollment in 2022. Dash lines that's out are from our last prediction, sorry, our last forecast prepared by Portland State University. The base year for that was 2018, the first perfection year for that was 2019. Whole two years before. Blue line is the high forecast. It's, it's a reference point. The green line is the middle forecast. That's, that's what we actually. The red line is the low forecast. And again, that's a reference point. The middle forecast is what we use for an actual planning. We have a bracket. And as you can see, we're actually below the low forecast. We are due for a forecast update from PESU. Kind of essential to have that done. As well as. You will have an updated forecast. I realize that I did not put, that I actually cropped out my legend. The yellow line across the top are births. Those are babies born and we are install this there every year along the top. The gray line, gray solid line, which right now ends in four thirty seven in 2022, 23. Those are our actual kindergarten classes. The number of kids, number of babies born in BSC and the number of kindergarten nurses. I'll put it off the top. But there's a relationship compared to the initial numbers. And you know, over the years, there are no insurance. The purple line, which has a dash on it, is again the PESU forecast. That's what PESU forecasted for us in the middle series of kindergartners. There's a number of short senior district. So over the last three years, we've been between. Below what PESU forecast. The bad news is that little one is in decline. That is declining. So declining births within the district as a result of declining birth rates in general. And our birth rates, our births, 8,007. Which correspond to Washington County and also the state of Oregon and public lands and time of aid in the US in general. But the number of babies born is declining and kindergarten classes by extension are going to be smaller. PESU, PESU will definitely update this portion of forecasts with the most recent data. 2020 is the most recent. The numbers may have improved a little bit. But in general, it's, it's. Finally, my last slide. So this is more of an impressionistic slide. Blue cells are relatively smaller than this size. So this shows our enrollment, each, each column is a school. And on the left hand side are the gray levels. If you are advancing down and to the right, you are following the cohorts as they drill this over the years. It begins in 1999, 1999. 1999, so it's actually a fairly long time series. We have data going back further, but this is. The red corner that moves down, through, down through the years. Those are our largest cohorts in the district. And they have been marching their way through and graduating with very large classes over the last five or six years. But beginning in 2019, which is already actually some dark boxes around there. 2019 was our largest kindergarten class. You can see we followed those boxes down. That class stayed relatively steady. When it dropped. In general, between fifth grade and sixth grade. The top right hand quarter, you'll notice that there are a lot of blue cells. So this is where we are today. Our, our enrollment is declining at elementary school level, starting at kindergarten grade. So every year, our largest cohorts graduate and move on. Smaller cohorts are replacing. So this is really the driving force that's changing behind the pandemic. Online charter schools or homeschools or students. A lot of people weren't moving. But this structural change, which began even before that in previous slide. Those are the end, that's the end of my slides and.
Question from the board. I've got a question to start us off. I'm wondering how much of the difference from where we thought we were going to be with enrollment to where we are in enrollment now? Could be attributed to, I guess you would say errors or just the wrong numbers in the birth rate? In terms of the modeling? And if this is something that you can get back to me by email, this is kind of a complicated question, so. For, for this year, I'm just, I'm just trying to understand is what part of, of where we thought we were going to be and where we are? Can be attributed to the birth rates being lower than what was expected?
Okay, for kindergarten, what we saw. 13%, but PESU forecasted for us 2021, you're about 9% or 100%. And kindergarten is the most difficult to forecast because we don't have any. We have an idea of how many kids were born, but it's not like we have a first grade classes. So. I, I expected to see return of some additional. This year, despite virtue of the fact that our. Pandemic situation has improved. But I think now we have three years showing a pretty substantial drop in our capture rate. There have been some additional data now. Looking at population cohorts within. For the course of 2020. And there were some drops actually. Children. So that could, that could represent an actual reduction of kids living in the district who are coming to kindergarten. That can have a sign. That's going to factor into projections.
And just the second part of that is then removing, you know, births from the equation and thinking forward. Are, are there common reasons or trends you're seeing in, in why we're down in enrollment? You know, and rationale for that, like if, if, if people have students in our district and they're not bringing them into our schools, is there, what is the reason?
We need to go back first off to the middle of the pandemic. We typically see nearly 2,000 students move into our district, the movement in and out. During the course of the pandemic, there were 800 fewer students who actually moved into our district. Because families should adopt moving for corporate reasons or for whatever other reasons that families move. Those are 800 students will never be able to capture. Because we, we average 2,000 students moving in and out over the course of a year. That we are not quite be able to capture for that, start this coming down the pandemic, 800 fewer right there. In addition to that, you've got other factors. And it's, we go back to the slides. Very, very. Yes, this one. So if you'll notice back in two thousand seven, I went backwards by height and birth rates in Washington County at thirty, or Beaverton, thirty eight, twenty five. You'll notice how many kindergarteners we have coming in or six from the twenty seven, seventy eight. There's a distinction of nearly eleven hundred. We don't obviously capture all those students. There's homeschool, there's people move, private schools and a whole area of other reasons. There's a differential of about eleven hundred students between birth rates and the number of students who walk to our schools. Similar to two thousand or to this year, you'll see thirty two, thirty five parents of birth rate for kindergarten class coming in. And the differential of approximately nine hundred, the differential is not too far off. It is dropping supportively. And given the number of birth rates and the decrease in shape. So the capture rate is, well, it's lessening because we have the students walking through our doors. We are still proportionally capturing the number of births that are happening in our area. So even though we're sliding down, we're not growing with the number of students entering the kindergarten.
So the percentage of students that can come into the district is remaining relatively the same if I'm understating. That, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, we're also seeing a lot of the development land is running out. So we'll, we'll continue to see population and students from there, but it's not going to be the same. You're not going to have to build another Sato to accommodate.
Thank you.
Susan?
Thank you, Gana, and then me. I'm just being, you know, hopefully polite tonight.
Yes, I have a quick question. You had mentioned that kindergarten students are returning back after the pandemic and I was going to ask, does that not improve their enrollment numbers or the birth rate is still keeping it still down?
Yeah, our our, our births are declining, proportion of students. If we capture the same proportion of students that we captured a few of them. And I'm, I'm not, I, I, I think that there, there probably is a perhaps. I, I think that there may be some change in how families are thinking of kindergarten. The last three years. But we also may just
I should encourage your friends and families to have these meetings. Found the problem right there. Thank you.
My question is an economic question because it looks like Intel is going to be laying off. Imagine this is we'll hide. Sorry, Eric, for bringing this up. Twenty thousand employees, which I'm sure there's a big impact, you know, in our area. And when that happens, because I know there's been times where Intel is laid off, I don't know if it's been this high. Does that impact our school district in terms of, is there a correlation between an Intel layoff and students going to our schools? Yeah, I would too, but I.
I think it's, yes, it's always quite a proportion. It just depends on where Intel makes those decisions that they're going to make. Or Arizona, they're going to be here or other locations around the nation.
I think it will.
There's also various years in terms of classes that we've had increases where Intel, you know, didn't tell us. By me, this, we didn't have around four hundred. At different times, they also invited families in and they were here for two to three years at a time.
That's, that's a positive thing. Thank you. Cause I was going in down the down path.
We're getting to the end of our twenty minutes here, but Becky, I saw your hand raising and you could run.
I, I, I was just going to make the comment exactly what you said about people are making other choices with kindergarten. I think we, we forget Montessori and also I, I think also what was happening even before COVID, but now is childcare and for, for people when they, it, it's, you know, it's really hard to get childcare. If they find a childcare and they happen to provide kindergarten along with it, it's one less thing that parents have to, you know, deal with. But I think it's also interesting. We just assume just because a child is born here, that families are going to stay here until they're five years old. And the, the other thing is our high schools are still because of the growth that's going on in Bethany, the growth is going on in South Cooper Mountain. Those homes are so expensive. You're not seeing people with young families that we thought. And that's why mountainside, they're, they're coming in with older kids. So that's, that's the, that's the other thing is that we can't take into account just the birth rate. But as we said, the influx of people that come in at whatever grade level and following those cohorts, we don't know when those kids join to be, for us to be able to follow. But again, this whole conversation is a discussion we need to take into account when we're doing our strategic plan. It's going to be a really important piece as we look at the next five to 10 years. Because we've been on justice growth mode and building and this is a whole different way that we're going to have to do, we're going to have to do business as a school district, right?
That's the thing I had right here. What impact will this have on how we do school? And then the second one is what impact will this have on our smaller schools? Our enrollment is going down in our elementary schools and we already have some pretty small elementary schools. It's just something to think about. So.
Absolutely. You're right, you're right. It's going to, we're going to have to engage in conversations that it was just group work that we've never had to be involved. That is consolidation. Those conversations will have to take place sooner than later. We are preparing those conversations potentially with the scope of the next year to present and begin those dialogues with the board. But those will all have to be very sensitive conversations with our community. Having community involvement in that is getting input. But we also have to face reality. Having a small school open of two hundred and thirty, three hundred kids. You have a similar infrastructure of almost identical to a school of seven hundred. You have a principal, you have a secretary, you have a superintendent. You have a starting point that is. Your teachers are neutral in that scenario. If it's the teachers, probably the kids are in the school. So that is a conversation we will have to annotate.
Something to think about would be what policies we have that we might need to look at prior to that.
Absolutely.
Eric, I think you had a, a comment.
Yeah, I mean, I think you brought the data here just to wake us up. I guess the structural, we have a problem. Looks like you're all admitting we have a major demographic problem. So. And we're sized for X and we're going to be a Y. And, um, you know, people wait too long when things are changing, you know, what happens is you get painful decisions. So. You know, I guess it's, I'm glad you brought all the data. Looks like you guys are pretty adamant where we're going, the direction of size and stuff. So. And I think the board's ready to help where we can.
Appreciate that. I don't look at this as a doomsday. It's just a different trajectory than we're reaching today in the recent past. We still look on the excellence that we've always delivered on here in Beaverton. We will continue to strive to improve. But I think it's also looking at how we are, the size of our screen across the district and how is the progress delivered. Dr. Porter is certainly helping us to engage in those conversations, the lens of teaching, learning. Doctor, while there is a saying, so it's, it's encouraging as we look to not reinvent ourselves, but what does the future look like for students? It can't look, it shouldn't look like it did in two thousand, two thousand five or two thousand fifteen. What's it need to look like by two thousand twenty five in the school district?
Thank you. We appreciate the report and I think this is something we've known for a while that we've been a shrinking district. But the trajectory that we're coming into it is a little steeper and I think it's going to be really important, especially when it comes to budget conversations. This will change the nature of budget conversations and the way we have to look at resources across our district. And as a board, I think we have to be prepared to take a hard look at things and make hard decisions because we're not going to be the school district with increasing enrollment that has extra, that can do that extra thing. We're going to be the school district that has to, how do we maintain what we have? And how do we prioritize new things if we're going to bring those new things in? And that's going to take a lot of, of different types of questions and a lot of prioritization, not just bringing things to the table, but weighing things against each other, which is skill. I think we're going to all have to, to work on and learn. So thank you for the presentation tonight. We appreciate it. Next up, we've got Division twenty two compliance assurances with Dr. John Bridges and we've got ten minutes on the agenda for that.
Evening. Thank you, Chair Colette, members of the board and Dr. Valderras. Here to present our compliance with Division twenty two standards and we are clients with all of that to and wanted to give you an update on those two. The first one is the requirement that there is adoption of instructional materials for Flex Online. They've been working. You know, the next item that they're going to have is. Cycle where those teams look at the standards, identify those practices and then identify instructional materials that are aligned with standards. So Flex Online is having to do that for all content areas that they're not using. At the same time. So probably a little more work than we anticipated. Because when content area, one of the criteria with the adoption of instructional materials is to look at how those materials match with the same criteria for that area. And the criteria varies in both its complexity and the amount of standards by subject area. So that was an easier subject period that I rolled in saying which language are. So I talked with Mr. Autumn, the principal. He says, since they're making good progress and they should finish their work. The ones that have the lowest criteria to look at. To match to the certain rules there being step by step online, probably by the end of this. Extension all the way through. And then the other rule that we're not in compliance. Zero two zero, which is on wording off affirmative certificates to students. There's a requirement that parents give written consent if a student it seems that alternatives are doing it in less than four years. Probably finally person the matter that a student can, so this is a rare occurrence. The student is moving towards an alternative certificate and was moving out of state at the end of their junior year and the alternative certificate was a work. The parent acknowledged at the top of the form, it says the student was going to graduate in June of twenty twenty one, which is three years. But the rule says the parent must explicitly waive the four years of education required if a student is going to earn either modified diploma or an alternative certificate in less than you don't really have that statement on file. So and we would say, well, technically because the graduation date is at the top of the form, the parent was waiving it, but really waiving it. So what we'll do is we're going to redesign both the forms for the modified diploma and the alternative certificate. So there's a line that says students graduating last three years, the parent waves the right to a fourth year of education. And we'll be revising those forms, I imagine, with the changes that are coming. With the report on the revision of graduation requirements, those special skills are eliminated. From now going forward, we need to change our forms. A little ways to wait before we find out how those recommendations play out with the legislature and the state of education. So one way to answer, but that's where we're at. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the board? Becky?
Not a question. Cause I've been on the board. I think this is the least amount of things we've pulled out of alignment and that's saying a lot after coming out of COVID. Congratulations to the staff for.
Becky, you took the words out of my mouth.
Yeah, no.
Great. Then we will move on to a local option levy update. Ms. Carrie Delph and Ms. Shelley Bailey Shaw.
I'm Carrie Delph, Chief of Staff. Shelley Bailey Shaw, our Public Communications Officer. Want to give a brief update on the local option levy within the November. Tomorrow, October eighteenth at eleven fifty nine PM is the deadline to register to vote. Anybody who lives within the Beaver village district and is registered, registered to vote by tomorrow at eleven fifty nine would be eligible to vote on a measure. Three, four, three, two, one, the local option levy on the ballot and the ballots will go in the mail on October nineteenth. In the meantime, our communications, community involvement department is still working hard to get impartial and with an attitude of our family, residents of our communities. So let's, you know, bring up the PowerPoint that I add to review. We do have our levy website. You've all seen before. We did distribute the posters to all the schools in both English and Spanish. And then the video is also produced in English and Spanish. I know that many of you have been utilizing that in your school community meetings. Thank you for doing that. And then after the posters, we have the parents for messages have already gone out from the district. And of course, we've been racking up our social media education as well. We'll be doing probably two to three posts per week. And those appear not only in the district accounts, but all the school reports as well. Mailers, those are actually are finishing up today and tomorrow, I think. And then they'll be delivered in the mail. They're going to every voter in the district. And so they'll get a flyer in the mail. And the flyers that you have in front of you are similar to the ones that are being mailed out to the public. The flyer we have in front of you is also being distributed to every elementary district in the district. We have both English and Spanish versions. Those were picked up by the courier team today and are being delivered to you all in elementary schools one morning. And they'll be in student pack packs by Wednesday. So thank you for giving out information. At school level, the middle schools and high schools are in their back to school rights right now. They're making copies, they're bringing updates in their newsletters. They'll be giving us more information this week. And of course, we're doing the P T O P T C meetings, which you guys are all a part of. Go to the, oh, and there was a parents for a message that will go out. At the district level, the superintendent is going to be answering the question at Lola next week. He's also having a coffee count on Friday. I'm, you were going to cover this and speaking to the road tomorrow. So the flyer distribution that we spoke about. And then we're going to get our media outreach probably midweek. Hopefully don't want to contact them immediately too far in advance because they're not quite ready to do those stories yet, but we'll make sure that we reach out to them and provide them with information. And then as far as your participation, of course, during the meetings and then you have your community presentations. I really appreciate you guys getting out to the Beaver farmers market. I think that's been a great place to engage our community and answer questions. So I think we have three of those left, I think, about before last day. So if anyone has any questions about any of the outreach, it'd be you.
Questions from the board?
Something.
Yeah, Karin?
Yeah, thank you for all your work on this. I know that Sunita and I are leading the levy work on the board side and have really appreciated all your support. And appreciate the staff and the principals sharing this information out with families as well, so.
Sunita, I see your hands up.
I want to thank you both very much, especially Shelley and both Carrie too. Shelley, for the video that you guys have made and your team, it's really good whenever I show it in the PTO meetings or in the MAC meetings. They, it makes things very clear, so if you haven't seen it, it's a very short video, it helps you understand what this levy is all about and there is also asked a question, so if community members, if you have any questions about the levy that isn't clear, you can put in a question or also there is a frequently asked question section that you can go to and see if you can find the answer to your question. Thank you, Carrie, for your support. Anytime we have a question, you have been so quick in responding and helping us do that, if you're part of them. Yes, for BeavertonSchools.org is another website that people can go to if they want to volunteer, because there's very short time left for the election date and it would be really, really helpful if community members can come forward and help us spread the word in any way that they can, so thank you very much.
And thank you, Sunita, for bringing up the opportunity to ask questions. We had about a half of the questions or so from the community. And I respond to those and those that come up quickly and we add to the. So folks are more than welcome to, you know, questions and the link is on the website.
Thank you. All right, we have an action item up next, we have the Language Arts Curriculum Project Team Charge. And we have Ms. Kayla Bell. Before we get our report though, do I hear a motion to approve the Language Arts Project Team Charge?
Yeah. Um, I move that we approve the Language Arts Project Team Charge.
I like the second motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded and now we can move to discussion. And Kayla, we're very interested in your presentation.
Well, I have forty-five slides. No, really, I was meant to, I need to recharge the project team and let you know that we're doing something a little differently. We are moving forward with Language Arts and English Language Proficiency Project Team, that's not something we've done before. But in our quest to make sure that we are providing integrated learning for our students, we want to make sure that we are doing these student options side by side. We believe that this is an opportunity that we haven't done before and we acknowledge that we may have some challenges along the way. But really, teams are going to be coming together as we gather best practices. We were doing our running targets and we move together, we come forward with the requests from the students. So that is what will be coming to you in the spring, it is a two-year process. And we are very excited about the idea of this work.
Questions, comments from the board, Karin?
Thank you for moving this forward and exciting that you're putting those student adoptions together. One of the pieces that I always, that I appreciated about some of the options that we've had is that they've really brought the Spanish, the dual language program alongside as well, so that it's from the very beginning, looking at what materials are needed for that program and not as an afterthought, so kind of look forward to hearing about that within your adoption process as well.
We'll have representation from our multiple departments, from our dual languages. And Dr. Toshi Gomuzio will be also part of this work as well. John Poplinsky represents.
And I also saw that we've been doing a lot of work with the dyslexia and moving that forward. So I appreciated that and it'll be interesting to see how that fits into this work as well.
We're currently looking at all the research, of course, there's the science of reading, as they like to call it, research that's out there, so our excuse will be as we evaluate our current position paper and take a look at our best practices and make recommendations or adjustments and changes.
Great. I just have a brief comment, which is similar to Karin's, which I'm very interested in this work. And in particular, seeing what we can do to support our dyslexic students, so. Interested in getting updates as the project team and the cadre dig in. I want to go back here, just really quick and make sure that we are making the right recommendation when we approve this, so. The, Susan, if you see the recommendation statement here.
Do I have to read?
Yeah, I'd like to read it because it's, I think, a little more involved than what we did a couple of minutes ago. No, it's okay.
Okay, Susan, we'd like to, okay, so let me just read off the sheet, I'm so sorry. Be it resolved that the school board direct the superintendent to form the Language Arts and English Language proficiency. I have to say it now, proficiency project team for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-four curriculum review. The committee will facilitate the program adoption proposal, instructional resources, recommendations and an implementation plan.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you.
Sorry about that.
No, 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 no problem. We'll take what goes. Hey. Board members will answer with aye, nay, or abstain when I call it your name. Susan Greenberg.
Aye.
Ben Perez.
Aye.
Eric Simpson.
Aye.
Tanita Guard.
Aye.
Ugana and Nania.
Aye.
Becky Timchuck.
Aye.
Tom Cludd is aye and the motion passes unanimously. We look forward to hearing more about your work soon. Okay, we have now gotten to the part of the meeting, it's comment time for individual board members. Susan?
I have two comments and they're related to OSBA. One is the OSBA Roadshow Legislative Roadshow is Wednesday, October nineteenth at the, don't tell me. Yes, the Northwest Regional ESD. It's an early start, I mean, it's a five o'clock start, which, you know, for people like most of us here are working, it's hard to get over there, but five o'clock start with dinner and the meeting starts at five thirty and it's at the Northwest Regional ESD. And the other reminder, I think you, hopefully you've been getting messages from OSBA about the conference. I think Diana's been sending us messages about the conference, which is November tenth. So I'm just putting it out there that it's probably the first in person for everybody in two and a half years and they usually have some really good presentations. So I would recommend going, at least to the Saturday.
Thanks, Susan.
I just wanted to ask or let you know that we are taking volunteers to do lip drops for the levy. They will be occurring over the next three weekends, Sundays from noon till three. If you go to yesforbeaverton.org, you can sign up to go lip drop with us. Everyone in this room is invited, as well as those that are listening in and those that are not listening in that would like to come join us. The more the merrier, so please sign up to come lip drop with us. The first one, this Sunday at noon, will be meeting at the BEA office. Thank you.
Couple of things, one, again, a lot of conversation tonight, enrollment, budget. Got to keep our eyes open, follow what the state is doing. This is, this is when the January legislature starts, new governor, a lot of new legislators. It's going to be our job, make, be advocates for our students, so that's the first thing. Secondly, I can't let tonight go, we are in a brand new building and setting here, I want to thank the board that we had when we made that decision, it was not a decision that was made lightly after all the other things that we had going on. I want to thank our taxpayers for providing the land that we're going to be able to sell to pay for this great building. I want to thank Dr. Carl Mead and his staff, Josh Gammas and all the other people. This, this is a beautiful, efficient way we're going to be able to do the best work for our students and we are very fortunate to be in a school district where our taxpayers believe that what is best for our students, but thank you to all the staff for making this happen tonight and I'm just really glad to be here in this new building.
Tanita?
Yeah, I just want to say that I want to thank all the donors, the community members who have come forward to help and support for the levy. We still need a lot of help, so please sign up for volunteering. And if you haven't already received your ballot, you will probably receive it this week. Vote yes, spread the word, tell your friends, vote for the levy, thank you very much.
Well put. Any other?
I think Gustavo had another forty-five of slides to go with.
A hundred slides.
That Kayla again.
A hundred, yeah.
All right, well, we're ready for another hundred slides. To make what your presentation. I don't think there's much to say that hasn't been said other than go levy.
Go levy, yes. Oh, yes.
Now's the time, this is the key time right now, between now and election day people vote. We need to be talking to people, whichever way we do that. And the importance of this, we have two hundred and eighty-six teaching positions, we need to make that case to our public, so. With that, I'm going to join our board meeting and but have a good night.
Thank you.